Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Good morning. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Kukowski? Welcome to the June 28, 2007 Board of Commissioners meeting. Commissioner Kukowski has a dog. Our quote for today in honor of 4th of July next week, "Patriotism is not short frenzied outbursts of emotion, but the tranquil and steady dedication of a lifetime," Adelaide Stevenson.
Very good. Nice. Oh, here she comes.
Good morning, everybody. Every week, we have a Dog of the Week from our dog kennel. Today, we have a little poodle. She's very young, maybe six months, a year old. Where was she found, Jack?
Pile South Amherst Row.
But she will be available for adoption on Saturday at 3 o'clock. She'll make somebody a great pet. Poodles don't shed, so come down and visit our dog kennel and see if there may be...
Oh, she gives kisses.
Come down and see if there's a dog for you. Thanks.
We have lots of takers today, Lori.
Let's put everybody's name in a box, and we'll pull their name, and they can take a dog home.
At 10 o'clock, we're going to have a public hearing on the second CDVG formula grants. At 10:15, there will be a presentation from Barb Bickel, the Director of Visitors Bureau for Backyards and Beaches Bike Tours. Number one on the resolutions, Job and Family Services bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
There are no investments appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Advances and repayments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Travel expenses.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Under the Commissioners authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordes.
Unfortunately, Commissioners, since we're going to have a look, so it appeared to be a long meeting this morning, I also have a number, significant number of personnel issues specifically at Golden Acres and Job and Family Services, potential new hires, and also an update on our ongoing labor negotiations, both at the county home and here at the administration building. Also want to talk to you about a potential purchase of real estate, and maybe one pending, pending, well, legal issue. So, looks like we're going to have a full day.
Number 10, instruct the clerk to advertise for the tax budget hearing on July 12 at 10:00 a.m., published in the Chronicle-Telegram on July 2, 2007.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Adopted credit card policy in accordance with Sections 301.27 through 29 for the authorization for use of credit cards for the purposes set forth in Chapter 301 for all employees in Lorraine County.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Under Children and Families Council, approve various contracts for fiscal year '08 Help Me Growth Program effective July 1, 2007 through June 30, 2008. Catholic Charity Service Corp., $250,940. Illyria City Department of Health, $356,150. Manuel United Methodist Church, $46,450. Lorraine City Department of Health, $215,550. Lorraine County Community Action Agency, $52,370. MRDD, $70,500. Neighborhood House, $334,100.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes. Mr. Cordes, did we have an opportunity? The Lorraine City Health Department grabbed me last week at the International, and you guys were going to have a meeting on the distribution of funds?
I did have a meeting yesterday with the Executive Committee of the Children and Family First Council for about two and a half hours, and we went over a number of issues. This was not one of them, Commissioner. I thought it was going to be one of them, and I had thought that Terry Tomaszewski would be at the meeting, and he wasn't. I have not had an opportunity to have dialogue with him on this issue. And I know you and I did discuss it. The allocation of funding is the funding that we received from the state. I did look over briefly, and it is on my desk, what they received in 2006 and 2007, and there was some changes to the allocation for Lorraine in 2007. The most significant change, though, came for the city of Illyria more so than the city of Lorraine. What I would ask you to do is approve this today, and we will continue to seek out answers to the resource problems that we're having to be able to provide services to the health department. But we are distributing all the revenue that we have. We haven't changed that. But there has been certain reallocation because of coordination of services. We're bringing on Catholic Health Partners as a service coordinator also, and we need to have additional service coordinators to make sure we penetrate the consumer base in Lorraine County more completely. And that's what took a little bit away from the health departments, because now you have an additional service provider.
Oh, okay. All right then.
Right. The same amount of money is being put into the community, but it's being allocated slightly differently so that we cover our consumer base, I believe, more efficiently.
All right. Wonderful. Thank you.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Submit a proposal for $20,000 for the operational capacity building grant for the council's operational costs for fiscal year '08 affected July 1, 2007 through June 30, 2008, and administer the funds.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Under Community Development Department, approve and enter into housing revolving loan fund administration agreement with the State of Ohio Department of Development effective for a three-year term retroactive to January 1, 2007.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Under Job and Family Services, authorize an agreement with WDA to define the role of fiscal agent for workforce investment funds for state fiscal year '08 affected July 1, 2007 through June 30, 2008.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Did you have something?
Well, I was just going to indicate to the Commissioners that we had, this was our agreement with Job and Family Services that we do each year, but we're exploring different opportunities and potentials to consolidate some of our fiscal matters into our budget department. Job and Family Services has been very good in the last couple of years doing this, but it's an awkward role for them, and we're trying to take the, several of the smaller agencies that we have and be able to pay for an additional resource in the budget department to centralize those functions and collapse them together, and Lisa and I have been working on it. We haven't been able to find enough dollars to do it yet, but we're getting pretty close. So, this may change over the next several months. But we have, Job and Family Services falls under you, and they're very cooperative, so we may be back to you in a few months with a different plan.
There is a cancellation clause?
It's with your own agency. Job and Family Services falls under the Commissioners. I don't know if you need to cancel it yourself.
Well, maybe you do.
I'm sure Mary Lou will be very flexible.
She'd be glad to get rid of it, huh?
That's probably what I was generally trying to say.
She's been trying for a long time.
Yes, she has.
All right. Thank you.
She's been a good partner.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Authorize the renewal administrative agreement with WDA for state fiscal year '08 affected July 1, 2007 through June 30, 2008, not to exceed $30,000, and authorize director to execute on behalf of the Board with Prosecutor's Approval as to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Authorize purchase of service contract with Murray Ridge Production Center Illyria for cleaning services for state fiscal year '08, and the amount not to exceed $4,064.16, effective July 1, 2007 through June 30, 2008, and authorize director to execute on behalf of the Board with Prosecutor's Approval as to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I just want to comment, this is a nice use of our resource out there, the client base at MRDD, and putting those people to work within our county system. They do a nice job.
They do other things, too, like shredding, and they do all kinds of services. We need to think about them and utilize them more if we could.
They do, and we have, on occasion, tried to partner. You know, I have a soft spot in my heart for the work that is done by our consumers at the MRDDs. I worked at an MRDD for two years, and I really understood the struggles afterwards and the challenges faced, so we do try to do that, and Amber and her team out there have been real good partners also with us, trying to find opportunities to successfully work together. So, we'll continue to explore those potentials.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Strike the clerk to advertise for bids for two digital imaging scanners for CSEA, published in the Journal on June 29 and July 6, and open at 2:00 p.m. on July 13 in the Commissioners' Public Hearing Room.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Under Workforce Development, approve and enter into purchase of service contract with Domestic Relations Court utilizing WEA funds in the amount of $15,000 for soft skills effective July 1, 2007 through June 30, 2008.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Approve and enter into various contracts using incumbent worker training monies which are contingent upon match provided by the employer, and authorize county administrative to execute on behalf of the Board with Prosecutor's Approval as to form for one EpiCor Enterprise for Genie Distributors in the amount not to exceed $45,000, Community College in the amount not to exceed $21,900, and JVS in the amount not to exceed $4,080.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Cordes, we know how much we've expended so far of those incumbent worker dollars.
We're going to be...
Our first pitch was $160,000 from the state.
I'm sorry, you think we have $160,000?
And then wasn't that the initial?
Yes, we initially did receive some funding, and then we attained additional funding. We have about $350,000 to $400,000 right now.
For that amount now?
Well, not expended. Expended, we're probably in the neighborhood of about $140,000 or $150,000. So, we have quite a bit of additional resources left. The program has moved, but not as quickly as we had hoped. Sometimes the companies have a little bit of a problem creating the match opportunity to take advantage of the training. All this training here is for Genie Distributors, a rapidly growing company that's been a good community company also, and we're pleased to partner with them. We've had, we've experienced a little bit of a slowdown. One of the things we can't do is we cannot use the incumbent worker training money to promote incumbent worker training. So, it's kind of chicken and egg with the way the state gives us funding. So, we're out there knocking on doors, cold canvassing, for lack of another term, trying to tell these businesses what this is all about. We're having a meeting in the next two weeks to try to reinvigorate how to get the word out there that we have this great program without having to just keep making these cold calls. And the Chamber's been a good partner with trying to get to their businesses, and the growth partnership, we're running it through there. So, I expect additional successes in the coming fiscal year after July 1, when they roll over. The good thing is, we did contact the state, and they did allow us to roll over any funds that we did not consume in this fiscal year, so that we can amplify that with what we're going to get next year, so we'll have a nice pool of money next year. So, we made sure that we didn't lose the resource in Lorraine County.
I'll make sure I promote it in all the business meetings I go to, so.
Just give them the phone number, and we'll get out there, and we'll try to get something happening for them. It's a great program.
Thank you.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Proven enter in MLU with WIB and Employment Network Partners to identify and coordinate a variety of workforce development resources to create a seamless, integrated system that addresses the needs of employers and job seekers by offering a variety of education, job training, human services, and other workforce development services to residents of the region, effective July 1, 2007 through June 30, 2008.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Cordes, I'll bring this up. Henckels letting 20 people go. If we contacted them through our Employment Network for retraining or, you know, job searching of any sort, I mean, that was on the radio yesterday morning.
It was. I heard that stressing news also. We can certainly have representatives at One Stop be proactive and make the approach to them. They're usually pretty good about doing that. This is, this is the partners that work, the mandatory partners that all work out of the One Stop area that we have to have a contract with, who's going to do what, so that everybody is understanding, and we don't have overlapping of services. I will inform WDA today that we want to take a more aggressive posture with contacting Henkel. I wouldn't be surprised if that's already been done, but I will make sure that it has been accomplished, Commissioner.
How about the Lorraine City School teachers with the 246 layoffs? Is anything, I mean, they're kind of a specialized type education component, but is there anything being done at that point?
Yes. The folks from the One Stop and the Community College did have meetings established to detail and explain the resources that are available. This is a hard population to serve. Most of the ones that have been laid off already are highly educated, highly skilled professionals, and finding opportunities within the parameters of the funding that we have is difficult with those type of folks. Most times, the best we can offer them is how to find the job services on the internet. They already know how to write resumes and do those things. So, some of those, some of the job skills that we offer, or the retraining that's possible, really doesn't suit them well. The unfortunate consequence of most of the teacher layoffs is that they're going to have to think about relocation, because there's not a lot of jobs right now in Lorraine County for educators, and the few opportunities that are available are going to be very, very difficult for people to get. So, they are being counseled on the potential for having to look further than they've had to before for employment opportunities. College, the college, and the One Stop and the WDA are having those meetings, and we'll continue to work with them to alleviate some of those stresses. The other thing that we've done is we've took that grant that we've submitted to DOL for the planning tools to prevent such things happening, and then we added to Lorraine City Schools in there. So, we may be able to get some funds for that to work with the schools to try to get some of those people back to work.
I just know through that wire grant, we, the first one, we applied for, we had 17 counties on board that are working. If we're going to lose those type of educators out of the county, let's keep them within our state. So, that's how, you know, if we had partnered with those other 17, 16 counties.
Well, I agree with you, Commissioner, and we're going to continue to throw everything but the kitchen sink at DOL to try to get some money here. And as you know, it's like running uphill with a backpack full of rocks, but we're not going to give up. And sooner or later, they're going to have to go, we're going to give you money, so you just stop sending this stuff to us. But we're not going to give up.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Men Resolution 04204, adopted in March 22, 2007, approving an interim contract extension with Workforce Institute in Lorraine County for 30 days, effective July 1, 2007. Actually, it should be July 31, 2007, the amount not to exceed $2,632,764.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Under Children's Services, authorize various additions and deletions of personnel in Children's Services Department to utilize the agency's MasterCard for the year 2007, not to exceed $20,000. Shell Oil Gasoline Credit Card, not to exceed $200,000, for work-related items to include conferences and for such others as food, lodging, transportation, telephone, gas, and oil. Minor vehicle maintenance and emergency repairs of county-owned or leased vehicles.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Under Domestic Relations, authorize various personnel in Lorraine County Domestic Court Juvenile Branch to utilize the county's lower Met Visa Card, not to exceed $5,000 for the year 2007, for work-related items to include conferences and for such others as food, lodging, transportation, telephone, gas, and oil. Minor vehicle maintenance and emergency repairs of county-owned or leased vehicles.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Approve the policy of Domestic Relations to donate sick leave to employees in accordance with Ohio Rubas Code, Section 124.391(c), effective June 28, 2007.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Do we want to talk about that a little bit?
Well, we certainly can.
All right. I'm just going to bring it down here to prosecutors. They're going to see it.
Right.
They'll both up.
Yeah, just talk, because we had discussed whether if a higher-paying employee donated to a lower-paid employee, that it will be paid if the lower employees pay.
Well, it always is, and the, actually, that's the beneficial part of the donation. Clearly, when a senior staff member donates leave to a junior staff member, there's efficiencies with that, but I'm not clear what happens when it goes the other way. Of course, I think the potential for it to be gone the other way is there. We did talk about some banking, and banking on a percentage basis and a dollar basis on what the outcome would be. And my thinking at the time was that if, and I'll make the math easy, if you have a $30-an-hour employee and you have a $15-an-hour employee, you would bank it at that rate and then draw it at that rate. But I'm not sure if that's been done.
No, it wasn't. It was taken as a straight trade out of time.
Right. The way both the DR policy and our policy is handled, Commissioners, they are pretty foolproof as far as avoiding any kind of accumulation on this. They are as needed, and so we're not going to get, it may be possible somewhere along the line, somebody might quit and have gotten a couple days out of this, but both of the provisions provide that there's not going to be any accumulation or any carryover where somebody could come up with large amounts of time and then get paid for that. There really is not much of a possibility of there being cash payments on this period.
Yeah, I didn't think the accumulation issue was something that we were too worried about, because it was going to be on a need basis, and it wasn't going to allow them to bank it. If I remember, the concern of a couple of the Commissioners, it was the potential of a junior employee donating leave to a senior staff member, which would make it more costly for the county to be providing additional sick leave. And I don't know if that was ever addressed. I didn't look at this policy. It's Domestic Relations Court. I know that we did have that discussion, though.
I think what ended up, though, we talked, was that as rare as it's going to happen, it's not going to be a financial burden.
Right, and it is always going to be an hour-for-hour thing. It's not going to be...
Not a dollar-for-dollar, an hour-for-hour. So, if a $30 employee donates eight hours, and a $15-an-hour employee, the $15-an-hour employee will get eight hours of $15-an-hour time and vice versa. So, I think in the size of the operation, based on the amount of times it's actually going to happen, it wouldn't be a financial burden.
Again, I didn't have concerns, but we just had discussions.
Right.
And I know that there's some thinking out there that would indicate that the Commissioners don't need to approve these policies, but my close reading of the code, and I think Council agrees, I think the Board is responsible for authorizing these type of programs within the other general fund departments in Lorraine County. So, it's your prerogative whether you want to do this or don't want to do this. We don't currently have one within the umbrella of departments that the county Commissioners directly oversee. We've just never felt the need to have it. Quite frankly, sick leave is generously given right now, and if it's used, except for in rare occasions, it usually accumulates quite rapidly. My only concern with leave donation of sick leave is that normally the people that are out of sick leave are the people that tend to zealously use those sick leave benefits, and then they find themselves in a situation that's difficult and maybe very legitimate where they've exhausted most of their sick leave, and they don't have the capacity to be out for, you know, a major illness. The large amount of sick leave that's given in the public sector is, and the ability under the code, and it's clear, the code wants you to accumulate that sick leave for catastrophic events. That's why they, unlike vacation, they do not cap on the civil service law, the amount of sick leave that you can accumulate, nor do they cap how much you can take with you if you go to another political subdivision. They're responsible for accepting your sick leave. There was a lot of thinking on this a long time ago in what civil service law about that sick leave. So, you know, there's just some different thinking about whether it should be donated or not out there.
If I might, Commissioners, and I know what Jim said, we all have people who use their sick time and abuse it, but actually, what we found was happening, we found some of our older aging employees, they are the ones who their families are being stricken with, you know, very serious illnesses, and even people that have hundreds and hundreds of hours accumulated, you get into a situation where somebody is dying because of cancer, something like that, that can be a year long, and we're finding outstanding employees with large accumulations of sick time are just using them up. And again, these are, these are programs that require approval, they're not. So, we just wanted to have something in place that we could retain those employees and get them through those difficult periods.
You know, where the one prosecutor fell and broke his back?
Yeah.
You know, those type of catastrophic type, or, you know, cancer, like we had down the recorder's office. I think that's where it's coming from, isn't it?
Well, they're...
This is the guy who's got the flu for a week, and he's out of sick time. This is the guy who's got the flu for a week and he's out of sick time, his buddy gives him eight hours full of his paycheck.
We've had, we've had a number of people in our office, and again, it usually affects the people that are getting older, your most experienced, your most valued people, and even people that have had good amounts, you know, they have, they never have been sick until this came upon them and all of a sudden they're wiped out. And that's what we have in mind to providing for. Again, there are always those situations that where somebody can manipulate the system and abuse it, but we haven't found that happening and that's our purpose in security.
And the department head slash elected official has to approve the transfer anyway, so I mean, I don't see a need to abuse it.
Exactly, we have all kinds of, and the DR one too, does have all kinds of checks and balances in there to avoid that kind of abuse.
Let me, and I'm not contrary to council's position on some of the good employees that are captured in the bigger net. They're more rare, I will tell you that, because mostly it's abusive users that have the problems, but I do need to inform you that when somebody is on paid time, they continue to be provided county healthcare benefits, life insurance benefits. So the longer that they're paid, the more they're going to continue those benefits which you pay for. All right, that's not paid for out of the budgets of these other general fund departments, it's paid from your global accounts. And again, I'm not telling you where you should or should not do this, I just want to make sure that you're informed of what the consequences to you are of people being able to continue to be paid. They should be exhausting their family medical leave and our obligation under the family medical leave is 12 weeks. But if they can get, if they're giving, if they're given donated time that takes it longer while they're on a paid status, even if it's sick paid status, we have to continue to provide those costly benefits. So, you know, there's quite a few factors to consider in this.
My feeling is this is going to be far and few between. I think it's a great program and I'm 100% in favor of it.
Just some questions, I think we all agree on that.
Anything further?
No.
Ms. Calhoun?
Hi.
Ms. Blair?
Hi.
Ms. Kowski?
Hi.
Do you want to continue or do the public hearing?
What we got left?
Only four more.
Yeah, let's finish it and then we'll go to the public hearing.
Under the engineer instructed clerk to advertise for bids for the 2007 crack sale in various roads in Lorain County, published in the Chronicle on June 29th and July 6th, and bids to be open at 2:30 PM in the commissioners' public hearing room on July 13th. There is approximately 13.5 miles at an estimated cost of $19,240 to be paid for the MVGT account.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Calhoun?
Hi.
Ms. Kowski?
Hi.
Ms. Blair?
Hi.
Proven enter into subdivisions agreement for Greystone Point subdivision, Greg and Tim Abraham developer, Brownhelm township. Engineers estimate construction cost is $650,000 and certificate of liability insurances with Lighthouse Insurance Agency LLC, Amherst.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Calhoun?
Hi.
Ms. Blair?
Hi.
Ms. Kowski?
Hi.
Approve an enter into subdivisions agreement for Songbird subdivision, Jim Tippel of the developer, La Grange township. Engineers estimate construction cost is $13,792 and certificate of liability insurances with Hovey Kizer Insurance Associates, Elyria.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Calhoun?
Hi.
Ms. Kowski?
Hi.
Ms. Blair?
Hi.
Proposed cooperate with ODOT for plans and specifications for the extension into Northridge Road, which is the West Lake in the intersection, and ODOT would construct, be lead agent in administrative project.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Calhoun?
Hi.
Ms. Blair?
Hi.
Ms. Kowski?
Hi.
Under the prosecutor, approved the policy of the prosecutor's office that was approved April 7, 2005, to donate sick leave to employees in accordance with Ohio Rebas Code, 301.27-329.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Calhoun?
Hi.
Ms. Kowski?
Hi.
Ms. Blair?
Hi.
Moving to the public meeting, please.
We will have the public hearing on the second CDBG Formula Grants, Linda, she's way back in the back, so.
Come on down.
We should have sent a golf cart for you.
It's just nice to see a large crowd, isn't it?
Yes, you should have heard the pledge of allegiance, it was beautiful.
Wow. Okay, I'm Linda Blanchett from Lorain County Community Development. I see some familiar faces in here. And today I'm here to, well, let's start it this way. This public hearing is being conducted on behalf of Lorain County Board of Commissioners in order to make application for CDBG fiscal 2007 Formula Grant. The first public hearing was held on March the 1st of this year and the program and general guidelines, I'm winded from walking that far.
Got to get you into a walk-in program.
Woo, what is that wellness program we're bringing here in July? We need to talk.
Yeah.
So the first public hearing was held on March the 1st of '07 and the program and general guidelines for the application were explained. Also during that presentation, the eligibility requirements and the application process were explained. During the second public hearing, I will present the basic grant requirements and the proposed projects to be submitted in this application for CDBG Formula 2007. The guidelines for the application are, and there's quite a few, Lorain County is permitted up to 15% of the allocation to administer the program, but not more than 20% if the administrative cost includes a fair housing activity. The county cannot exceed 15% of its total allocation of public service projects unless it requests a waiver from the Ohio Department of Development, which we will be applying for that waiver. Lorain County is limited to no more than six county activities in one given year. The acquired cities, which I'll get into in a little bit, are limited to no more than three activities each. CDBG formula funds cannot be used for new construction projects unless it eliminates slum and blight or the removal of an existing architectural barrier. The three national objectives that proposed activities must meet are benefiting low and moderate income persons, addressing slum or blighted areas, meeting a particular urgent community development need. We have to meet one of those three. There are specific activities that we are encouraged to fund. These of course are homeless shelters, Meals on Wheels programs, counseling for the elderly, or activities that improve the mobility of the physically challenged. Lorain County is considered an acquired county because it has less than 200,000 residents and once the entitlement cities populations have been subtracted from that population. An acquired county, Lorain County, is required to make application on behalf of non-entitlement political jurisdictions to work with the state of Ohio on all community development projects. The cities of Lorain and Elyria are entitlement communities and therefore they operate their own programs and receive their own funding. Lorain County is required to administer the programs for its acquired cities, and this is where I tell you about the acquired cities. An acquired city is defined as having a population of more than 5,000 but less than 50,000 unless the city has a population over 20,000 and elects to apply directly to the state of Ohio. The city of North Ridgeville is a state entitlement city since its population is greater than 20,000. North Ridgeville is able to apply for CDBG funds directly from the state of Ohio because of their population size. Lorain County's acquired cities are Amherst and Sheffield Lake. The city of Avon, Avon Lake, and Oberlin are no longer considered acquired cities due to their small percentages of low to moderate income population. They are, the downside is they are now competing with the townships and the villages for the funding. Acquired cities have the responsibility and authority to identify and select their own projects based on their allocated amounts, less 15%, which is permitted for the county administrative fees. Each acquired city is limited to no more than three activities. The county's fiscal year 2007 allocation is $371,000. As I said in the first public hearing, it seems every year we get less money. This is a $10,000 decrease from '06, which was $381,000. The notification and applications for the ability of CDBG funds, I just noticed this.
It is a bone.
It's a dog bone.
Yeah. I think they keep it there permanently.
Notifications and applications for the ability of CDBG funds were mailed to the townships, villages, and small cities immediately after the first CDBG public hearing. Applications were accepted through May 25th of '07. The applications submitted were reviewed for eligibility under the CDBG guidelines and for compliance with national objectives. This year we had 12 requests for funding received by our department, Lorain County Community Development. Today we present the projects for Lorain County's CDBG fiscal 2000 application. It is our desire, following the outcome of this public hearing, to submit on behalf of the Lorain County Board of Commissioners, an application to the Ohio Department of Development, Office of Housing and Community Partnerships prior to the July 13th, '07 deadline. The proposed submissions are, public rehab rehabilitation, the city of Amherst, $34,000. Public service, city of Sheffield Lake, $30,000. Public rehabilitation, Brownhelm Township, $60,000. Public rehabilitation, Columbia Township, $46,800. Public rehabilitation, Carlisle Township, $34,200. Homeless shelter, $35,000. Senior services, $32,550. Home repair, I just said that backwards, senior services, $38,800. Home repair is $32,550. General admin, $50,650. And implementation, fair housing, $9,000. Which brings us to our total allocation of $371,000. And in conclusion, a list of these projects has been presented in this public hearing to the Board of County Commissioners as a recommendation in order to submit to the Ohio Department of Development on behalf of Lorain County. The CDBG FY02, FY07 application must be submitted by July 12th, '07 to meet our July 13th deadline. And as all due diligence has been done, I would ask that the commissioners approve the application as stated.
Should we ask for public comment first? Could I have a public comment on the CDBG? Then I would make a motion to recommend.
Second.
Excuse me, do we need to close the public hearing?
Before we vote?
She always does that to me.
I'm sorry.
I was trying to say it.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Ms. Calhoun?
Hi.
Ms. Blair?
Hi.
Ms. Kowski?
Hi.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Calhoun?
Hi.
Ms. Kowski?
Hi.
Ms. Blair?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
10:15 Theresa.
Okay, is Barb Bickle here?
I saw her come in. She's way in the back.
She's way in the back, sent a golf cart.
Did she come to this side itself? Barb is going to talk to us about a new program initiative of the Lorain County Visitors Bureau, its backroads and beaches. I think it's rather exciting and it includes many areas of Lorain County.
She might want to come over here because the PowerPoint's over there.
Over that, welcome Barb. For those of you who might not know, Barb is our new director. What you need?
Can Jim transfer the thing? Can you transfer it or put it up or?
When you get your bike out, you can go on this route.
Is it up there?
She has some more, Jim, if you're, when you're done doing that, you pass the map. And for those of you in the audience, I don't know how many maps you brought, Barb.
I put some in the racks downstairs.
Okay, she'd be happy to share them with you.
Good morning, thanks for inviting me here to present our backroads and beaches bike tour from Lorain County Heritage. I want to thank Commissioner Blair for coming out and riding her bike last week on the kickoff. First I'd like to thank Lorain County Engineer Ken Carney for supplying the route signs for the bike tour. And here you see the rest of our sponsors who financially contributed to the route. Before I show you some of the images from the tour, I'd like to tell you a little bit about why we did this. Promoting ecotourism in Lorain County meshes perfectly with Lorain County's Heritage's mission to promote responsible travel to and within Lorain County. Ecotourism is also proving to become a hot new trend in the tourism industry. Which is perfect for Lorain County because for cyclists, we already have many of the high quality natural assets that these travelers are looking for. We have the rural roads, scenic roads, low traffic. We have a state park and county parks that are already proven dedicated to cycling. Research shows that there's a crossover between heritage tourists and ecotourists. Heritage tourists are looking to experience the history, arts, and culture of an area. What we've done at the Visitors Bureau was combined our unique environmental, recreational, and cultural entities, and we've linked them all together in an easy to follow tour. The goal was to create a stronger and more marketable package. And by involving smaller businesses that focus on environment, health, and recreation, we can reward their efforts with an added marketing tool. We already have national cycling initiatives that are bringing cross-country cyclists through Lorain County. This is Adventure Cycling Association, a national bike touring company from Montana that has two cross-country routes that already go through Lorain County. One moves along State Route 6 and highlights the lake shore, and the other, a new underground railroad route, travels through Wellington and Oberlin. We want to keep these cyclists here long for the added economic impact. These are some of the results we'd like to see from the route. People on bikes spend more time visiting an area than those traveling by car and zipping through on the interstate. Touring cyclists depend on our businesses and their services. They also become more engaged in the culture and the environment. Cyclists don't add to air pollution or seasonal traffic problems and thereby have a low impact on our natural resources. We'd also like to see the residents of Lorain County feel pride in the beauty and the cutting-edge environmental initiatives that are here. Hopefully this will inspire participants and residents to become more interested in sustainability and health in their own lives. We've identified smaller parts of the tour that can be completed by families and smaller children. This offers additional opportunities for us. In fact, we'd like to eventually market the program to student and youth travelers who might want to combine history, culture, health, and exercise into a group visit. And now that the route signage and maps are in place, we can actively market this area to organizers of triathlons and multi-sport adventure races. These are wonderful opportunities to bring more people into Lorain County for these events. Here's a view of the route. The western loop runs between Finley State Park and Wellington up to Vermilion. This section of the tour is approximately 60 miles and features backroads and beaches signs. Once in Vermilion, cyclists have the option of riding along the lake shore to Avon Lake and back. This will add another 50 miles. The businesses, parks, museums, and eateries that are highlighted on the map are so diverse, cyclists could spend two or three days exploring and riding, and that's what we want to do, we want to keep them here. Another great, unique feature of the tour is that it visits four Lorain County wineries.
You walk for a while.
You have to walk for a while after the winery.
When you get to the winery, you buy a new bike.
I know.
He did, yeah. That's why you're walking.
We've attempted to identify the services that cyclists are looking for when they travel on the map. So what you'll find on there is lodging information, camping, laundromats, convenience stores, places to get an internet connection, where they can get bike service, and where they can get food and water. Not everything is directly on the route, so we've provided spur information so a cyclist can easily find a business located off the main route, such as lodging in Elyria. The restaurants we identify are those that either serve healthy meal choices or have spectacular views of Lorain County's natural resources such as Lake Erie. So the following slides are images of a small sample of the tour. Finley State Park in Wellington has over 900 acres of woods and a 93 acre lake for boating, fishing, and swimming. Finley truly embodies the multi-sport component of the tour because here cyclists can kayak, mountain bike, hike, cross-country ski, or trail run. It's hard to find places to mountain bike in northeastern Ohio since it's not allowed in the Cleveland Metro Parks and Cuyahoga Valley National Recreation Area, so Finley's already drawing mountain bikers from all over. The entire route is very doable for somebody who is reasonably fit. Most of the roads are rolling, but there are some challenging climbs in the Vermilion River area, but these can be walked if need be. The Lorain County Metro Park's Wellington Reservation is a highlighted location. The park has four miles of bike trails and paddle boats for rent. There's even an observation mound for bird watchers. One of the most impressive features of the route is the diversity of the nature. In the southern portion of the ride, cyclists will encounter forested parks and might share the roads with Amish buggies. The route also travels by many working farms who might be selling produce on their roadside stands. Cyclists can get up close to view agricultural scenery all throughout the southern portion. Moving further north, the route comes into Oberlin. From agricultural to cultural, the splash zone is right on the route so cyclists can swim. This portion of the trail also utilizes the Lorain County Metro Park's bike path, so this is a great area to bring children. Families could combine a bike and swim along with the Underground Railroad tour and visit one of the several establishments that serve healthy meal choices in Oberlin. Oberlin is the perfect place for arts and cultural enthusiasts to spend the day. These are photos of the Brewer Pottery Gallery and Artist Studio, Allen Art Museum, the Oberlin Heritage Center, and the New Union Center for the Arts. All welcome cyclists. Here are a couple of the eateries on the tour highlights. The Oberlin Market is tucked away behind Main Street and features locally grown produce, vegan, organic, and ethnic foods. They also have an outdoor patio. The Agave Burrito Bar prides itself on its high quality locally grown and produced foods and vegan choices. I do want to stress that these are only a small sampling of stops along the tour. It's hard to pick one over the other, but I think it's necessary to show you a few to give you a sense of the spirit and the flavor of the tour. The four wineries along the route all welcome cyclists for tastings. Two are located in the western portion of the tour and two are located in Avon Lake. Onto the Vermilion portion of the tour, the Vermilion River area is just spectacular as far as rolling roads and scenery. The top left photo is taken from Sperry Road Hill looking down over Corriffage Road. This area is just beautiful and it makes a striking statement about Lorain County to visiting cyclists. On the bottom left is Mill Hollow, a Lorain County Metro Park. And on the right is the sign coming into the historical Harbertown District of Vermilion and the Vermilion River. This is where the rural landscape changes to nautical charm and lake-related recreation. Again, the diversity of nature will really keep cyclists interested here for more than a day. More scenes from Vermilion, the Inland Seas Maritime Museum on the left and the Red Clay Restaurant on the right. The Red Clay offers a prime view of the Vermilion River. This is a shot of Gifford Road turning onto Vermilion Road. Cyclists will find apple and cherry orchards right around the corner, and a little further up the road is Mill Hollow Metro Park. Eastward onto Lorain. If riders choose to turn eastward and ride along 6, they'll ride into the city of Lorain. Here's where the beaches portion of the tour really kicks in. Here's where the beaches portion of the tour really kicks in. Lakeview Park is undergoing a spectacular renovation that will feature a new bathhouse, restored rose garden, and a fountain. And another beautiful view of Lakeview Beach in the fall. The Lorraine Lighthouse. Lake Erie Recreation really complements the multi-sport aspect of the tour. Once cyclists reach Lorraine, they can rent a kayak and go out onto the Black River and get an up-close view of the lighthouse. They can swim, play beach volleyball, or hop onto a charter boat for fishing. Here's a shot of the Black River Landing while a tall ship was here about a month ago. Black River Landing is another gem for Lorraine County. There are a series of events here throughout the year, like the International Festival and regular farmers' markets. The area continues to become more and more geared for visitors, and we anticipate it'll be a popular spot for visiting cyclists. This is a shot of the Jackalope Restaurant from Lake Erie. A great place to sit outside with a spectacular view of the lighthouse. Continuing further east, Avon Lake has sandy beaches, 20 miles of bike trails, wineries, and a boat launch. This is only the beginning for an overall ecotourism marketing program for Lorraine County. We'd like to eventually see the program continue further into the season, into the fall and the winter, and bring people here for things like cross-country skiing. Now that we've developed the model for the program, Ashland and Richland Counties to the south are working to join with us for 2008. This is really exciting for us because this would make our combined counties a premier recreational corridor from Lake Erie to the Mohican area, and it would truly be some of the most spectacular riding and scenery in Ohio. Again, the diversity of the terrain and the low-traffic roads would be a major draw for cyclists and would enable us to compete with some of the most high-profile bike routes in our region and even up into the east. And we hope that it'll bring people from greater distances. So in conclusion, I want to mention that a route map and guide are available at the Lorraine County Visitors Information Center. We're located on Levitt Road in Amherst, just south of the Ohio Turnpike. And information can be obtained by calling our office at 984-5282. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb.
Nice presentation.
Great idea.
Did you go all 50 miles when you went?
I refuse to answer on the grounds it might tend to incriminate me. There are some maps up here, if anybody wants to pick up one.
Did you stop any of the wineries, Commissioner?
We didn't get that far. Thanks again, Barb.
Back to the agenda.
Mr. Cortez, County Commissioner.
I just have the issues that I stated for the executive session. I had a couple of things, but since it looks like it's going to be long, they can wait until a different time, so I'll yield to counsel. Thank you.
Mr. Nissis, Assistant County Prosecutor.
Commissioners, I just had meant to mention something about Item 12, which was conforming that map. Yesterday, I met with trustee Bob White, Gary Crane from Carlisle Township, who I think got out of his sick bed to come down and help us, and Mike Zekley, Assistant Solicitor with Elyria. And I just wanted to recognize and thank them publicly for helping us work that out. And I also wanted to put one special kudo in there for Tim Era down at the map department, who always does an absolutely tremendous job in helping us out, especially, well, he and Marty Rowe always do a wonderful job out there, and they never get any recognition, and they're especially helpful to somebody like me who's a bit challenged with that computerized stuff. So I did want to thank them and recognize them publicly. And I too will defer and withhold any of my other things till next week.
Commissioner's report.
I'm going to pass. I'm anxious to hear from the townships this morning.
Mr. Blair.
I'd just like to refer back to Item Number 10, which we approved, and it's the setting of the public hearing on July 12 at 10:00 a.m. for next year's 2008 budget hearing. The total general fund is for $66.6 million, and since we know that most of the audience is here today to talk about the sheriff's allocation for this year, I'd just like to point out that the sheriff's allocation for next year is the second-highest dollar amount of any department. Domestic relations is slated to receive $9 million, and the sheriff is slated to receive $7.9 million. The third-highest funding is for our insurance, pension, and taxes at $7.3 million. Again, our total estimated budget for 2008, $66.6 million. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Kokowski.
I just want to mention what an emotional weekend it was, starting with Thursday. Sacred Heart hosted a dinner for the Vietnam Veterans Memorial, and then Saturday, starting at 11 o'clock, it was a beautiful, beautiful presentation that they did, starting with a helicopter that was in Vietnam and on MASH, landed across from the memorial to deliver the United States flag, which was carried over to the ROTC, which they hung on the flagpole. And it started like that, and it went like that for like two and a half hours, and it was absolutely beautiful. It was a beautiful day, very emotional, and we got to do something for Don Addy. I want to do a proclamation or something for that man. I don't know what he's going to do with himself now, because I mean, this guy lived and breathed this Vietnam Veterans Memorial for probably about five, five to seven years, so I want to commend him and tell him what a fantastic job he did putting that all together.
He'll go back to making a living installing floors and countertops. I've been friends a long time, and he gave up his career for.
Yeah, he did.
He did. Also, we had the bridge lighting. Commissioner Kokowski was out with a migraine that night, but Commissioner Blair and myself went very well. Nice turnout at the International Festival this week. Also, the Fever Five Soccer, which didn't get much press here in Lorraine County's papers, The Chronicle, and The Journal, but they had a very nice turnout at the Community College. Brad Friedel's first soccer tournament, they did a nice job, 68 teams. So just congratulate them on that, and it's been a busy weekend. We will go to our next issue. Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Commissioner Calo. My name is Richard Williams. For those of you who may not know me, I'm a trustee from New Russia Township. And I appear here today along with several of my colleagues from other townships in Lorraine County. And we're very concerned about an issue that's beginning to plague the township, and that's the lack of adequate road patrols and community policing. We cannot reemphasize enough the importance to maintain adequate road patrols and community policing, not only in the townships but also throughout Lorraine County. On June 1, Sheriff Somety announced that there would be, because of budget restraints, severe reductions in the road patrol programs and some new community policing programs in the county. Since that time, we've seen a rapid rise in thefts, burglaries, break-ins, other type of misdemeanors. And we're here today to request from the commissioners that you allocate the necessary funds to restore the community policing and road patrols to the previous levels that's been in place and enabled our residents and the townships throughout the county to feel secure and safe. We appeal to your sense of concerns that you've had in the past, your compassion for fairness, your judgment on issues, and your obligation to duty to take the necessary action without delay, if possible, today. Pass those resolutions and allocate those funds to the sheriff's department that's necessary to restore those programs to the previous levels that we've all enjoyed for the last several years. I have with me several colleagues, and they'd like to share some additional information to support the reasons that we think you should provide those funds for these programs so they can continue. And I call upon, now this time, trustee from Carlisle Township, Jim Wright.
Thanks, Dick.
Morning, Jim.
Well, it's a good morning outside, but it's not a good morning that we have to come and address you guys. Why do townships have to beg you for protection? You campaign for election in the cities where most of the votes are. The rural areas are not as important to you, but you still have a moral obligation to protect all the people all the time, and not some of the people some of the time. As Lorraine County continues to wither and die on the vine, the sheriff's department becomes more important than ever. And they say that the cream will always come to the top, and the sheriff's department has been doing more with less for a long, long time. And how much longer can you expect the sheriff to hold it together for us? Thanks for every time.
Thank you, sir.
Morning, Commissioners. My name's Rob Scheitauer. I'm an Elyria Township trustee. I'd like to say a few words in support of the Lorraine County Sheriff's Department, requesting necessary funding to continue to run our department effectively and efficiently. The Lorraine County Sheriff's Department has two major areas of responsibility. The first is the statutory responsibilities. These include, but are not limited to, jail administration, prisoner transport, courthouse security, civil requirements, subpoenas, et cetera. The second is a moral responsibility to keep peace and promote public safety. The township residents have long depended on the sheriff's department for keeping the township roads safe by having visible patrols, responding to emergencies in a timely manner, investigation of criminal activities, and apprehension of those persons who may take advantage of the rural environment. And most importantly, keeping an open line of communication with township residents that increase the sheriff's department effectiveness. Every citizen in Lorraine County expects and deserves protection from the local law enforcement agencies. Major cities have their own law enforcement agencies, but the townships depend on the sheriff's department to protect them, and the sheriff's department depends, or, the sheriff's department to protect them, and the sheriff's department depends on Lorraine County Commissioners for the funds to accomplish this. The Lorraine County Commissioners have a moral obligation to provide protection to the citizens of Lorraine County. This obligation is not being fulfilled when the necessary funds are not being allocated to the sheriff's department. Township residents should not have to worry that there might not be protection for them if an emergency arises, and an officer of the sheriff's department deserves to know that there will be backup help from fellow officers with and when needed. A deliberate underfunding and the resulting understaffing of the sheriff's department has put our deputies, correctional officers, court officers, your employees at risk. If budget cuts are needed, then these cuts need to be taken from other areas that do not need to be put, the welfare and lives of people in jeopardy. Township residents pay for police protection through taxes, and you have the moral obligation to provide protection to each and every citizen who resides in Lorraine County. Township budgets are extremely limited, and the increase in funding from the population shift in the cities and rural areas will be wisely used by the townships to provide basic services to our residents. The townships cannot be financially burdened by providing their own public protection. This is a service that the Commissioners must provide to our township residents. Lately, by your actions or inactions, you are placing the welfare of the residents of the township in harm's way. Please make public prior to November election that services and sales tax increase that would provide to the residents of Lorraine County. If the Lorraine County residents were to know where the tax increases to be spent, maybe they'd be more likely to vote yes for the increase. In closing, when these services are curtailed or eliminated, it promotes fear for the residents and their property. This intervention destroys trust that the residents of townships have in their trustees and in the Lorraine County Commissioners. We trust AU Commissioner Betty Blair, Commissioner Lori Kokowski, Commissioner Ted Calo will continue to administer the necessary funds to allow the Lorraine County Sheriff's Department to continue to protect the townships and rural areas of Lorraine County. I'd like to thank you for speaking here today.
Thank you, Rob.
Good morning, Commissioners and guests. I'm Rita Canfield. I'm a trustee for LaGrange Township. Visually disturbing. Ready? I'd like to take a few minutes of your time this morning to review some numbers regarding the workload and the level of manpower in the sheriff's department and the road patrol. While none of this is new information and all comes from easily accessed public records, it does point out some areas of great concern for Lorraine County residents who live, pay taxes, and rely on the sheriff's department for their safety and your leadership of this county. The data cited is for the time period of 1998 and 2005. If you could please focus on the screens, you can visualize this data. Calls for service, 4,000, 41,669 in 1998, 49,520 in 2005, an increase of 16 percent.
It's not coming up. It's not correlating. Does it have to go? While you're speaking, it's not showing, Rita.
There it is.
I think you got to press the buttons to keep it going. Sorry about that.
Not a problem. Can you see it?
Yep.
Good. Reports taken, 4,320 in 1998, 5,433 in 2005, an increase of 27 percent. These two areas reflect only a small part of the basic road patrol function. Not noted are the numbers of business checks done daily, traffic stops that result in arrest, or other officer-initiated services. Other patrol duties include warrant duties and sexual offender notification. These functions are done daily with an average of four to five officers and a sergeant assigned to each shift. Their average patrol area is in excess of 350 square miles. A snapshot of the jail on July 20 in 2006 shows a total population of 502 prisoners. 100 of this total are from outside Lorraine County, leaving us with 402 county residents held at the jail. Of that 402 residents at the jail, 390 are residents of the cities and villages of Lorraine County. 12 of that total number in the jail as residents there of population are residents of the townships. Let's not include any of the county inmates in our percentage, given, or out-of-county inmates in our percentages. Given as a percentage, 97 percent of jail inmates are from the cities and villages of Lorraine County, while only 3 percent are township residents. We will not even begin to discuss the healthcare issues that are plaguing the sheriff's department, that the services are required to provide. That comes out of the sheriff's department budget. Not to mention the manpower necessary to guard those while prisoners are in the hospital. Sexual offenders, the very words cause fear for parents everywhere. The requirements for tracking and notification of communities where these offenders reside are tremendous. This work is also time-consuming and labor-intensive. Let's look at some of the numbers from that same time period. A total number of offenders, 531. City and village residents, 490. Township residents, 41. These figures confirm that 8 percent of sexual offenders are township residents, while 92 percent are located in cities and villages. Active warrants as of July 20 in 2006. Total in the database, 2,300. Total out-of-county, 635. Total out-of-county: six hundred and thirty-five. City residents and village residents: one thousand six hundred and ninety-five. Township residents: ninety-five. Once again, let's not factor in the out-of-county numbers and look at percentages. Six percent are township compared to ninety-four percent that are located in the city. When we summarize these statistics, all categories over 2004 and it continues today, there is an increase in percentages associated with cities and villages and a decrease in the townships. Out of fifty-seven officers, twenty-seven are primarily assigned to the road duties. When you consider vacations, sick days, et cetera, you have six officers for three hundred and fifty square miles of patrol per shift. Let's add in sexual predator notification and address verification anywhere in the county, hospital guard duty, travel to other agencies outside of Lorraine County to pick up a prisoner or deliver a warrant, and we see that this situation is deteriorating quickly. This leaves residents at risk and puts deputies in harm's way. The incidents that occurred on June twelfth and again on June fourteenth of this year demonstrate clearly the need for adequate manpower and funding to ensure the safety of all involved. The Lorraine County Sheriff's Department cannot continue to operate at nineteen ninety level of function and manpower and funding. We will not be a progressive community if we do not ensure the safety of our citizens and their property. Remember that the frozen budget for the past four years and then a two percent cut does not reflect the cost of operation in 2007. The deputies and the citizens deserve and expect better. Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners, Consul, Guest. I'm Doug Edwards, trustee in Eaton Township. I'd like to bring a few items of interest to you. For approximately the past five years, the Sheriff's Office budget has been frozen. The manpower on Road Patrol has not changed in approximately the past twenty years or more. The Sheriff's Office is currently operating at approximately a forty thousand dollar deficit. The Sheriff's Office budget was cut by two-point-five percent in 2007 and all the other county departments were cut by five. However, the Sheriff only asked for four cruisers instead of eight, which the Sheriff normally asks for. Two-point-five is approximately one hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Sheriff's budget and the cost of four cruisers is also approximately one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, equalling approximately five percent of the Sheriff's budget, which means that the Sheriff did realize approximately a five percent cut, like all the other county departments. The Sheriff's gas costs have drastically gone up and he has to operate on the same or reduced budget, meaning the money has to come from somewhere within his current budget. The Sheriff's Office has cut two dispatching positions and completely cut overtime for Road Patrol, resulting in a manpower for the Road Patrol to be cut even more. The Sheriff has also resorted to having deputies patrol in two patrol cars, two-person cars, which decreases the amount of police presence and decreases the chance that a deputy will be in the area of a call when a call is entered, um, when a call is dispatched. This results in longer response time and decreased service to the entire county. An example is if there are six people working and they were doubled up, this would leave three cars for the entire county. There has been addition to the number of judges and the size of jail within the past ten years. However, there has been no increased additional numbers to the deputies patrolling the roads investigating the crimes within the past twenty or more years. Recent settlements in litigation over the Justice Center Project scandal has resulted in an award of approximately four hundred thousand dollars. These funds were now available for original county appropriations. Why not allow, why not allocate a portion of these additional funds to the Sheriff's Department to provide safety and security to Lorraine County residents? County Treasurer Dan Tiharic has reported receiving one-point-three million over original estimates, resulting in higher investment rates for the county funds. Perhaps the Commissioners could allocate a portion of these funds to the safety and security of our residents. The FBI standards for police manpower is two-point-three officers per thousand residents. The Sheriff's Office is at approximately point-oh-nine-five sworn Sheriff Department deputies per thousand residents, less than half the FBI recommended levels. We in Lorraine County should considering our increase in safety and security, not a decrease. In closing, please consider allocating a portion of the four hundred thousand dollar judgment award and one-point-three million dollar additional investment increase to the Sheriff's Department to provide safety and security to Lorraine County residents. Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners and Guest. My name is Richard Conrad and I'm a Penfield Township trustee and the president of Lorraine County Trustee Association. I want to talk on the investments that townships have with the Sheriff, Sheriff substations. The township's ability to pony up was established many years ago. The current substations around the county is an example of that. There are seven up and running throughout the county. Penfield had, was one of the first, followed by Eaton, Amherst, New Russia, Rural Water LaGrange, Fairgrounds Wellington, and Clinton Avenue Sheffield. The financial commitment to make room and in many cases, thousands of dollars spent on satellite stations shows the township's ability and willingness to partner and make our current services better. With the current cutbacks, these substations could become less efficient with the cost of utilities being so high, it could cause the closing of the substations. This would cause our stretched, stretched Sheriff's Department to be less efficient. In closing, I urge the county and the townships to work together to provide the services we can count on and deserve without costing the taxpayers more money. Thank you. Thank you, Rick.
Hi. My name's Denny Abraham and I'm an Amherst Township trustee. And usually you see Neil up here talking for the township, but he was kind enough to let me speak today to an issue that I feel very strongly about and very serious about. It's hard to believe, it's been forty years ago, just about this time, I was a young Marine sergeant in Da Nang, Vietnam. And I was in charge of security around a base, Third Marine Amphibious Force in Da Nang. And under my jurisdiction were a lot of different Marines and we had weapons anywhere from M-sixties, rifles, some heavier duty weapons, but I was always packing a forty-five.
Do you have one today?
Yes, I do. And you know what?
I give up.
I'm gonna start packing it again. No, seriously, I've made a commitment to get my concealed carry and start packing again. Not just to protect my family or my constituents, but in case I have to back up some of our Sheriff's deputies. I've been out on road... I've had the opportunity to be out on Road Patrol. I used to go out quite a bit with Tony Saroski. And it's really something how undermanned we are out there. I told Rich the other day, Rich Wasenda, I said, "Our security is so lax." We're just inviting a nine-eleven for Lorraine County. What do we have to do? Do we have to wait for a Virginia Tech experience? Do we have to be carrying out our own body bags before we start taking seriously security in this county? Jim, you were in the Navy for eighteen years. Were you ever in a combat zone?
No, not at all.
Did you ever carry a body bag of somebody that was your friend?
No.
Okay. Let's not wait till that happens. I am gonna start packing again and I am gonna get my secure, my concealed carry. And I'm gonna do it with the idea that I'm gonna help protect my community. And I'm gonna do it with the idea that I'm gonna help be a backup for the Sheriff's deputies out there because they are undermanned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning Neil.
I'm Neil Lynch. I'm also a trustee in Amherst Township, the executive committeeman for Lorraine County Township Association. You've heard the various presenters communicate the need for strong and effective safety and security services for all Lorraine County residents. Services that are provided by our Sheriff's Department. You have been presented with various statistics of increased service demands placed upon our Sheriff's deputies over periods from seven to twenty years. Demand increases that have not been accompanied with proportionate staffing and funding increases. You've heard about moral responsibility to the citizens of Lorraine County and providing the appropriate funding for these necessary safety and security services. You've also heard about investments made by various townships and infrastructure to improve the delivery and efficiency of safety and security services to Lorraine County citizens. And you've heard a very passionate, emotional, and forceful presentation from my fellow trustee, Mr. Dennis Abraham, who has faced fear in the past, knows personally how fear can terrorize and infect a person's being. As trustee Williams indicated earlier, the presentations may have sparked questions and concerns among the Commissioners. If the various presenters did not already answer your questions, we'd like to take the opportunity to address your questions to the best of our abilities. Second, we encourage the Board of Commissioners to reaffirm Commissioner's Resolution Number ninety-two dash seven forty-one, which pledged to maintain the staffing levels of twenty-eight line personnel, patrol officers and deputy, deputy sheriffs within the Sheriff's Law Enforcement Division. And third, we would appreciate each Commissioner stating their individual position relative to the support of immediate funding restoration to the Sheriff's Department to ensure adequate officers are available to deter crime and minimize fear. And at this time, we'd really like to know the Commissioners' position and also if there are concerns or comments on your part that you'd like to bring forward to any of the presenters that have been here.
Commissioners? Kokowski, Blair? First, anyone?
I have a lot of thoughts and a lot of comments. First of all, I'd like to tell my trustee, Jim Wright, that I think you're entirely wrong when you suggest to us that the rural areas, rural areas are not as important as cities. Shame on you, I live in your area. And I always have. I was born there. I didn't just move there. Several times trustees from various townships have come to the Commissioners regarding the plight of the two-and-a-half percent, which equates to about a hundred and forty-six thousand dollar cut that the Commissioners have given to the Sheriff's Department. Two-and-a-half percent, when every other department got five percent with the exception of the, of the Treasurer's Department. Because we realized that it was a man-intensive and that would be difficult to equate to anything but personnel. And the scenario that trustee Edwards put forward was interesting except that the police cruisers do not come out of the Sheriff's Fund. They come out of the general appropriations that we provide all vehicles for. So the rationale is very good, but it, those, those vehicles do not come out of his general monies. I'm gonna say this once, I've said it fifteen or twenty times. We have suffered a loss of three-and-a-half million dollars of local government monies thanks to Earl Martin, former state representative, who has been replaced, and Jeff Armbristow, a former senator, who did not listen to our pleas. And there was a freeze on the distribution of the local government monies to our county. We were the only county that that freeze affected. And those gentlemen, in their wisdom, took the initiative to lift that freeze last year. Had they not taken that action, you would not be here today and we would not be faced with the loss of three-and-a-half million dollars. It would have come eventually, but it would not have come this year. Your townships collectively received five hundred thousand dollars of that three-and-a-half million. I have suggested several times that perhaps the townships could get together and contract with the Sheriff's Department for some of the shortage that you're experiencing now. I see some head shaking in the distance and that's fine if that's your opinion. But guess what? The protection of the townships in Lorraine County has been an issue for as long as I have been a Commissioner and for as long as I was a township clerk, so that's over thirty years. I don't know what every township in the state of Ohio does, but I do know that in other counties, a number of townships contract with the Sheriff's Department slash Commissioners to provide police protection in their area. And they do provide some of the dollars for that service. If this is supposed to be a cooperative effort, it has to be a two-way cooperative effort. It can't only be that we come and tell you what our problem is and then you pay for it. You've got some of the dollars that we had. We have a problem facing us. We are trying to resolve that problem by having a sales tax on the ballot. We didn't start with it to be on the ballot, but it's on the ballot now. Had it been initiated, it would be in effect now and the Sheriff would have been made whole. But we don't have the money to do that right now. On number nine, on, I believe it's Neil's thing, he says, "The various townships stand willing to cooperate with the Commissioners in developing creative, innovative, and regional alternatives to ensure a stable funding source." My note that I wrote down here, does that include support for the sales tax? Previously, and I went through my files last night because I've been here for a while. And in nineteen ninety-five, when we had the sales tax issue, Lorraine County, then called Lorraine County Association of Township Trustees and Clerks, was in support at their January twelfth meeting. They passed a resolution voting unanimously to support the one-quarter percent upcoming sales tax on the May nineteen ninety-five ballot. We need to work together, we have a problem. I appreciate the fact that you're here today. We like to see you. Not just when you're asking for dollars and cents, but we have a mutual constituency, except I can't talk. And I live in the township, one of them, and the other seventeen that you represent. You're the size of a large city. And I think you need to work together and I hope that that's what you intend to do. And just for the edification of some of the newer trustees, we had some serious problems in nineteen ninety-one, the first year I was Commissioner, and there were some significant layoffs in the Sheriff's Department. And the Deputy's Association sued the Commissioners for the layoffs. There was a court decision rendered and the Association appealed that decision and thanks to Jerry Ennis for supplying a copy of it because I couldn't find that. And the Ninth District Court of Appeals upheld the decision of the local court. We have copies of it if anybody wants to see it. It says, "The judgment of the trial court is affirmed." There were three pertinent items that I outlined. It says, "In order to obtain police protection or to obtain additional police protection in times of emergency, any township may enter into a contract with one or more townships, municipal corporations, or county sheriffs upon such terms as are agreed to by them for services of police departments or use of police equipment." Emphasis added, this protection, protection contemplates that townships will contract with their counties for police protection. The legislative mandate to quote, "preserve the peace," quote, only requires that a sheriff respond to calls and bring to justice those the sheriff knows to have committed illegal acts. Any additional police protection the sheriff provides the residents of Lorraine County is a discretionary matter for the Commissioners and the Sheriff. And one other item I... And one other item I provided, document that I also found in the files, it's a January 20, 1995, a newspaper article from the Morning Journal that talks about the county to hire four more deputies. So you mentioned 20, having been here for X number of years. 1995 is 12 years ago. I guess maybe that was the last time we increased the size of the deputies. And I found this very interesting, too. Sure, an order of police sent a thank you for the increase in the size of the deputies. Those are my comments for now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Krikowski.
Yeah, when we had our hearings with the sales tax and we had all the departments in to talk about the issues, the sheriff's department came in and this is exactly what we were hearing from you guys today. It was very disturbing to find out how much more they have to do now than they did, say, in 1990. So they are doing a lot more with a lot less now. I don't agree with Ms. Blair as far as having the townships pay for the shortfall. I think if they want additional road patrols, once that 150 is reinstated, hopefully, if you want additional, I think it would be up to you to look for additional officers. I'm going to kind of wait until July, this next month, we're going to have additional hearings from all the departments to find out, half a year's gone, where they're at, what they've done to save us money. But it would be my opinion, $150,000 in the scope of things, that I would be willing to use our carryover to reinstate that money for the sheriff's department. And I've said that in the past, and I haven't changed my mind.
Comments?
My turn. Yeah, thank you all for coming today. I'm just coming in, Commissioner Krikowski, before I get into all my notes, so I don't know if Sheriff Stominy's here or not, but, or Captain Resendez, if they can answer the question, does $146,000 actually restore your needs? We need you up here, sheriff. Sorry, we'll send a golf cart for you, too. Let's get to the point, because I don't know if the $146,000, in some prior numbers I had, a road patrol deputy was approximately $71,000 on average. That's two road patrol deputies, and I don't think that handles the rest of the sheriff's needs, so let's, if we can get that part out of the way.
Morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Contrary to belief, I did not sic these people on you today.
Sure.
They have concerns, and they have legitimate concerns. I have met with them on several occasions. And just to address a few things, yes, I realize things are tough right now. Everybody has taken their hit. I mean, we keep talking 145,000, but when really, as you know, we have collective bargaining agreements that you guys vote on and pass. So actually, you need to add about $72,000 of that with people's raises. I've sent you letters over. Just recently, we just settled with the communications officers. And that contract cost about $10,000 for retro payback and everything, so. And as you know, for the last four years, everybody's budget's been frozen. I've really basically taken all my equipment money to move it over to my salary accounts just to make it. We have skimped, and I think we've tried to do our part at the sheriff's office, and I'm sure every other elected official's done the same thing. And I do agree with one thing, and I think the township people do agree. We keep saying, gee, if they want any more deputies, they need to pay for it. I don't think they're arguing that point. If they need to get more officers, they realize if they want to have in their townships, they do. But I think what we have now, and I've told you this before, I'm not over here beating your door down, saying I need 10 more deputies, even though I do. But what I am saying is, what I have now, you need to fund. And for us to take those hits every year, it is tough. And I know it's tough on you, but, you know, they bring up points where, now, you do have this extra $400,000 that you got in. You do maybe have an extra million. Maybe we can take some of that money. We did have a carryover, and I agree with you. I don't, my own budget at home, I don't believe you ought to spend everything you got in the bank because you have to live other years. I understand that part of it, too. But yes, if I could get that money to restore my budget, I could make it for this year.
How much are we talking again?
Do you need a 146 or 218?
If I get that 145, where we were cut, I can make it. But I, you know, obviously, as you know, I mean, you can sit here and say that that money didn't come out of my budget for the cars. Commissioner Blair is correct. But I'm over here every year asking you for that money, and that is county money.
Well, I understand, but I wanted to make that point.
No, I understand, but we did save the county some money by only asking for four cars.
And we appreciate that.
And that's why I say, we want to work together on that kind of stuff. And like I say, I don't think they're here to point fingers at you and back and forth.
Yes, you did. Then he was going to pull his gun on me.
And Mr. Wright had to say that we didn't care about the township residents, so yeah, I do have some.
Well, but, you know, they get emotional.
And they're allowed to get emotional.
That's understandable, because as they said, we just had a deputy that really could have got seriously injured about two weeks ago. He was out on a call by himself, and he fought with a guy. And as you guys know, in this day and age, there is a lot of drugs out there. This guy was 19 years old, and he was all hopped up on drugs. They even shot him with a taser. It didn't even really affect him. This guy tried to get my officer's gun. This guy tried to get into the cruiser to steal his car. And the fight was on with him, until he got some help there. But, you know, eventually, that turned out okay, but it could have turned very ugly. As you watch the news, as I do every day, you see these kind of things happening out there. I think what they want to do is keep the dialogue open and keep everybody working together. I appreciate what you do. I know you have a tough job. I'm not the only one over here asking you for things. There's many other departments with the same scenario.
But while we've got you here, Sheriff, I have some questions. That's why I needed you or Captain Resendez up here. So I think the trustees understand, maybe not the residents. As we said, we're a budgetary body. That's our first job. We give budgets to all the elected officials and all the department heads. So our first job is to balance the county budget. And we've talked in the past on this. Now, you've said that you have had to, I'm assuming, rearrange your men at this point because there has been nobody who's lost their job at this point.
Yes, I have not laid anybody off. But with the budget that I do have, I've cut overtime since January 1. I met with these officers on January 2, when I knew I had my budget. And I told them, guys, there is no overtime, period. Now, I can't control when officers go to court.
I understand that.
And their days off, they get three hours paid for that. That's.
But also, not to get into your day-to-day, but I'm saying the things that you've been stuck having to do, because as everybody out here tells us they want less government, they keep petitioning their state legislatures and federal legislatures to make more laws so that is more government, so everybody understands that. And as it comes down from the feds or the state, they actually have Department Administrative Service who puts a cost level on a concealed carry weapon or notification of sexual offenders, correct, Sheriff?
Yes.
Okay. Well, then they send down that mandate that the sheriff is required to provide these services. He has to notify within 1,000 feet or 500 feet, whatever municipality or township or village decides, on moving in a sexual offender, or is that your rule?
1,000 feet?
Yeah.
No, that's state law.
That's state law, 1,000 feet.
Yes.
So he has to do that by state law. It's not something the county has told the sheriff he has to do. When concealed carry weapon came down, you were told you were going to administrate that, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Did they send any checks with those mandates?
No.
Okay. So there's where our state government and fed government is failing us at the county level, because we're just an extension of them. They send down these mandates requiring the sheriff or domestic relations or the prosecutor's office. So I said domestic relations. They took the largest cut. They took a 10% cut to their budget. And they're wondering how they're going to make it through this year. And we'll be doing fiscal hearings on July 12 and 19. So when you're saying the county commissioners are not participating or we're looking to not fund issues in our county, it isn't because we don't want to, it's because even if we gave the sheriff the same funding, he has more responsibilities than your elected officials have sent down for him to administrate. So this is not where we're cutting back on services. He's required to do more, and they've sent no checks along with it. So as he reallocates his dollars and we give him money to do his job, it takes away from other services he's provided in the past. Mr. Cordez, you were going to say something?
I'd like to add something to the issues on the budget. And the numbers that were up there, while I believe that those numbers were intentionally, were meant to be correct, they're not. Those budgets have grown over the last years. There is a lot of what I would like to say off-budget issues for these departments that are paid from global accounts. Just to go back, just a handful of years, healthcare was running $350 for a person. It runs $1,100 per person now, and that doesn't come out of your budget. That comes out of the commissioners' budgets.
And Jim, let me excuse you for the residents here. Now, we're talking about a global budget for those government monies that are used to perform services for the department heads and elected officials that isn't shown in their budget, that has been an increased cost to the county. And for those of you who are self-employed or work for someone else, you know, as your healthcare's gone up, and give them some of that background for those who don't do government finance, because it took me a while to understand it.
Well, we don't allocate on a full absorption budget basis, so not all the costs captured in the budgetary numbers. If you were to request a budget for any of the general fund departments, whether it be the orders, the sheriffs, or the treasurers, it would not reflect the full absorption cost of running that department. And a lot of those costs have accelerated greatly in the last few years. Healthcare is the number one. It's gone from, you know, $350, $400 per employee per month to over $1,100 per month. And those staffing levels have not decreased, so you can just do the math pretty quick on how much that's gone up over the years. And also, there's other costs, such as, you know, the labor relations cost that we pay for outside the budget. That's all assumed in a global account. The automobile expenses are all assumed in global accounts. And I'm not just pointing.
Payoffs for sick time.
Payoff for sick, payout for sick time and vacation time. Those are all things that are not reported in a non-full absorption budget, and we do not have full absorption budgets, so you cannot get a clear snapshot of whether these budgets have been increased or not increased. Now, there has been freezes on the salary accounts. I will give you that. But also, and I need to go back and look at those numbers, because I'm positive that we agreed to certain increases over the last three or four years under some of those union contracts. I remember distinctly, one year was $70,000 that the board agreed to pay because they approved that labor contract. And I think that was only two years ago, so those.
Was it '05? Was it '06 or '05?
And again, I'm not trying to be contrarian or argumentative, but I'm not sure that the numbers that were placed up here accurately reflect the growth in cost for these departments. And if we're going to talk apples to apples, then let's talk apples to apples, not apples to watermelons, because there has been a significant cost increase that this board has funded over the last several years. You need to capture all data, not just the data that supports your position. And that's what we've done.
I don't think they're all aware of how that goes when they bring up the cost.
Again, I understand. I didn't say that we're intentionally doing that, but there is, the public could be under, could be misled with the numbers that were placed there that there has been no growth. There has been significant growth in those numbers over the last few years.
Mr. Chairman, while you're looking there, I just, that three, when I refer to the budget for 2008 and the three high categories, the third highest category is the insurance, pensions, and taxes fund at 7.3 million dollars.
Yeah, and let me just take that discussion point a few seconds further. Our liability insurances continue to go up. They went up a couple, I think this year was $80,000 or $100,000 on our liability insurances. Those are also costs that are not captured in the budgets of these general fund departments because they're paid out of a global account. Those things have continued to go up for the last years. Now, I don't know if we have the ability to go back and do it in any reasonable timeframe, or nor do we have the staff that can dedicate the time. But I'd love to see a full absorption budget look over the last few years to see what the growth in all of these general fund departments have been. I think it's going to be very revealing that you continue to fund these departments and continue to pay for these departments. We've already had half a million dollars in payout for separating employees this year in various general fund departments that we've paid out of a global account under the Board of Commissioners. That cost is not recaptured in any of these departments, so it does not reflect the true cost of doing business. And Commissioner Kalo, as a businessperson, you have many times told me that you don't like the way that's done. And I agree with you. I don't know why it's done that way, but most governments don't have full absorption budgets. Whether it's too costly, too time-consuming, I don't know, but that's the, we have improved that process here since I've been here, but I don't think we're anywhere close to having full absorption budgets. But we need to make people aware that there has been considerable growth in the budgets of these general fund departments, but it's not reflected in their specific line items that they control.
Now, let me go back through, because I want to make sure I catch all these questions. All right? Because I'm sure there's going to be some responses from the other trustees who spoke. And I'm just going to go in order as presented for questions. Mr. Wright, when you said we don't care about the townships, I really didn't care for that comment, so I'll make that quite public. But Mr. Shaitower, you had some comments in here about moral obligations. And I, so far, I guess safety's the number-one issue in the townships. Would that be your number-one issue versus roads or sewers or ditches?
It's an important issue. It's not necessarily number one.
No, what's number one? Give me a number one. Do you guys prioritize through the township association what's number-one priority through the townships?
Presently, our number-one issue is the lack of adequate road patrols and community policing.
Okay. At this time, okay. Well, that's where we're helping. When you say moral obligation, I think that falls from our elected body, your elected body. If there's a way to partner on something, I think we should look at it. Also, when you were asking about the sales tax, and I have pushed this nonstop, when you look at our budget overall and the $7.5 million this would generate, 72% of our general fund operating money goes to the justice system, which is from your jail, sheriff's department, prosecutor's office, clerk of court, all the way through the judges. That's where the money goes in our budget. So when you ask what we're going to do with the sales tax, we're going to keep everybody else alive. Okay? We've talked about our $15 million carryover, and I've talked about my other commissioners the last few weeks. That's not just a separate checkbook. That's already been appropriated. We would have to take away from other appropriations. We are going to get the $400,000 from the Justice Center settlement. Treasurer Dan Tellerick says we've got $1.3 million in investments. But to go back to government budgets, for everyone to understand, that's what's called a budget commission. It gives the amount of money we're going to receive in a year. The budget commission this past year, which is the prosecutor, the treasurer, and the auditor, gave us a budget of about $48 million for receiving revenue. Now, we know that's a conservative budget over the years. There's a certain amount of play you can have to work with on what you're going to receive as revenue. We took an educated estimate, and so we're going to get $51.5 to $52 million in revenue, expecting investment income to be up, knowing there were going to be some settlement dollars coming from the Justice Center, because this goes back to last year. We are aware of what the other officials are working on and what they're doing, and they brief us, and so we have Jerry Ennis here from prosecutor's office. So we know we're going to get additional revenues. It's not just the 48 million. We can say it's been this in the past, and we work our way forward. So we guessed about $52 million was our final number. When we ran the budget with the cuts, we're going to spend $57.5 million. We've cut everybody, I don't think Sheriff Stominy's going to give us back any money this year, right, Sheriff?
Probably not.
Well, see, I took an assumption that I assumed was right. So we're not going to receive back any money from our general fund department, so we're going to spend $57.5 million if we don't do anything, leave everybody as is. And I don't think that's anyone's intent. That's why we're doing fiscal hearings, to see where we've had savings at and where we can squeak by. At that point, we're taking a $5.5 million out of our current carryover from 2006. We'll be down to approximately $9.5 million, okay? So let's work with the $9.5 million instead of this number that isn't there anymore as of last year. After that $9.5 million, whatever we reinstate will come out of that money. Well, if we reinstate the $2.8 million in cuts and fulfill everybody for this year, plus their bargaining units, which would be an additional one, we figure $3/4 of a million all in on top of the 2.8?
That's fairly accurate.
We'd be down to about $5.5 to $6 million. When we opened our doors on 2008, January 1, we would be close to just making our first couple of payrolls before we got our tax receipts. And you guys are familiar with receipts, because you get your local government fund payouts between the two different funds, the original and the second. So the county needs working capital. We're not looking to go bust, but we don't want to hurt anybody's life or their safety, quality of life issues. We're all more than aware of it. We had a murder in Lorraine last week. Where I'm from, Commissioner Krikowski, I mean, we're aware of safety issues, and it's coming from the east. They're moving out of Cuyahoga. It's not just their population, it's also their crimes coming this way. And we understand the plight of the townships, because you have sheriffs and you don't have your own police department. They have to cover the 18 townships. But as we move forward on this and keeping government operating, we could give them all the money, every department reinstate you, we would not open our doors next year. So then we would cut everybody's department to bare bones. We wouldn't be here talking about how we're going to do the road patrols. We're talking about how we're going to run the jail, which is a mandated operation, correct, Sheriff?
Yes.
Okay? So as we look forward, we're not doing this to hurt anybody or to say we don't care about the townships. We have certain mandated services required to provide. We're trying to require, we're also trying to provide those road patrols to the townships as, I wouldn't say it's immoral, but as a responsibility to elected officials for safety, for the 53,000 residents that are in the townships. But we also are asking for your help. And as we go through these things with the fiscal hearings coming up, and we have talked in the past, I know you, some of the townships have fire, full-time fire departments. I don't know how you fund that, if you do it by levy, if you do it out of your general fund, if you do it out of your local government fund. fund, if you do it out of your local government fund. But based on numbers of seventy-one thousand dollars per road deputy, and that doesn't include cars and gas, and our cost to all-in PRS healthcare is a little bit more than I would guess because of time. As guys get older, they get racist, so they're a little bit more expensive. Seventy-one thousand, about the good number this year, Sheriff? Average cost of a road patrol?
That's probably in the ballpark. And I guess I wanted to say one thing. I don't disagree with what the county administrator, Cordez, said, but I guess it's, you have to compare it to, that if you're going to say that we pay these things, I mean, I can understand. If you're going to make me pay them as a sheriff, then you need to give me the money. If you want me to pay healthcare and, because I know I was just called a couple of weeks ago, "Well, Sheriff, you need to put forty thousand dollars in workers' comp." I don't have forty thousand dollars. So I basically told the auditor, "I can't do it."
Sheriff, I wasn't indicating you should pay them.
Yeah, and I understand what you're saying. Yes, the county does pay those things. I know with the levy money, it comes out of there, but obviously, the levy money's not keeping up with that.
Right. I was just indicating that-
The cost of it. And I understand that.
Right, there had been growth in overall cost that were, if you're doing a full absorption look at a department, that were chargeable to the department.
Right.
And we're just talking about yours. Every general fund department's like that. You know, you and I go back to the labor negotiations years ago and-
Yes, and I understand.
The, and workers' comp has been a hit in a lot of the general fund departments this year. It was, the departments had to move money to make their workers' comp cost because the cuts came across the board.
I understand.
And workers' comp is based upon payroll.
Right. And then I do understand the justice system does eat up a lot of the general fund. I understand that, too. I mean, I guess it is the price of doing business. I mean, and it is a sad thing of what's going on in society today. And now Commissioner Blair had told me one time, "Well, Sheriff, you can't lock everybody up." I understand that, too. Some people do belong in jail. I can tell you, some people are dangerous, and they are criminals. And they tell me, "Hey, Sheriff, when I get out of jail, guess what I'm going to do? Back to breaking in homes, back to stealing cars, because that's what I do." And as you brought up, Commissioner Kallo, it is a quality of life issue. And that's what it comes down to. I mean, we can sit here and spout all we want. Does the law say we have to do this or do that? I don't think it's discretionary for people's safety, and I don't think it would be to any of you either. So it's, we do have obligations to protect people, and I think you guys understand that part of it, too. I didn't come, I know I'm coming over July 12th to go over my budget, so I wasn't even planning on speaking today.
Anybody, did you say some questions I wanted to answer? Sheriff, sorry to put you on the spot there for so long.
No, that's okay. But I understand what the township people are going through.
Right, the township trustees and the-
Thanks.
Commissioner Kallo? Can I say something?
Sure, Jim.
Lorain County-
I'd stop him if I wanted to.
I don't have much to say. Lorain County is not withering and dying on the vine, as Mr. Wright has indicated. And if the board doesn't find that unacceptable comment, I certainly do. All right? There's a lot of great things happening in Lorain County. I don't know what's going on in Carlisle Township, per se, that Mr. Wright's saying, but I do know that, you know, the county's been struggling, but there's a lot of progress being made and a lot of initiatives underway within Lorain County that are very exciting. And this board specifically is taking a huge leadership role in transforming Lorain County and leading a part of the change that's going on in northeast Ohio that'll position this county very strongly going into the next decade. I just don't like comments like that from leadership in Lorain County because it just adds to the bad feelings, and it's not accurate.
Is the glass half-empty or is it half-full?
With the comment that you made, Mr. Wright, I just want to say, I don't think that this whole issue is a township issue anyways. I think it's a county issue. I mean, the road patrol goes into the cities, and it's not just a township issue. So I just want to make that clear.
Mr. Lynch, go ahead. In the way we have some dialogue. I didn't quite get finished, but I'm sure you're going to bring up issues we're going to talk back on. So go ahead.
Yes. Commissioner Kallo, I appreciate some of your comments. I especially appreciate the last comment from Commissioner Kokoski. And we certainly have no intention of making this a combative situation. It seems like we're all picking on one comment that came out from multiple presenters. And I can tell that some people are very defensive about that, and they may not agree with that. That's fine. I understand that. But when I heard about full absorption, fund growth, the healthcare, judgments, carryover, budget commission, PRS, labor negotiations, and all this other stuff that took us down some other fork, I'm looking out at all these residents here. I don't know about you, but the last thing I understood was apples to apples. And somehow, it looked like we just took a bunch of grapes, grapefruits, watermelons, whatever those other things were that county administrator Jim Cordez said. We threw them in a big vat, and everybody here got a chance to stomp their feet over them to make them all mush.
Oh, we made wine, Neil.
And that may have been wine, as Commissioner Blair says. What Sheriff Stomity pointed out, which I understood clearly, safety and security is not discretionary. I don't think these people need to hear all that detail because anybody can pick, as county administrator Jim Cordez pointed out, specific figures anywhere and distort those figures. What we did point out very clearly, and number two, recognizing that there are changes and growths and all sorts of things move, is that we haven't seen proportionate, proportionate staffing and funding increases. That's what we're looking for here. We want to talk about numbers and accuracy. Let's make sure that numbers are accurate. We hear about a half million dollars going to townships. According to this document, for the 2007 distribution, a local government revenue assistance funds from Lorain County Auditor's Tax Settlement Department going to the townships. Out of the shift from the county, and the county had lost, according to this, three million, thirty-four thousand, seven hundred thirteen dollars and fifteen cents. Of that, three hundred sixty-eight thousand and fifteen dollars go to the eighteen townships.
I beg to differ with you. I've got the figures in my office, and Commissioner Kallo had our budget department work it up, and he's got the copy right in front of him in totals. Between the local government fund, four hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars and-
Minor estimates.
Local government, I'm sorry. I've got those figures in my office, and I did it. It comes to five hundred thousand dollars.
I believe that trustee Williams from New Russia Township just handed the official document to you from the Lorain County Auditor's Tax Settlement Department. Those aren't our numbers. Those are his numbers.
Those are both funds, Neil?
Those are both funds. And if you look through the documents there, Commissioner Kallo, you'll see each fund. And what I did was then take from the difference that's in there. But the funds are accurate, and I've compared those with what we've seen in previous budget hearings. They do line up. So I just want to make sure this is accurate because I've seen that half million dollar pointed out in the media that is inaccurate. What that tells you, though-
I'll certainly look at it because I did it with my own adding machine. And I know how to use one.
Well, I appreciate that, but I just want to make sure that accuracy's there. Again, I do not mean this to be combative, but we need to get this accurate. That's roughly, a little more, about ten, eleven percent if you go through the numbers of that funding shift from the county to the townships. What that tells you is the balance went to municipality. So let's keep that in perspective. As Commissioner Kokoski so adequately pointed out, this is a county issue. Our sheriff's department serves the whole county, not just the townships. And I heard it pointed out that the townships come here and ask for this and ask for that. We should not be in a position, just like people in Iraq, of begging for safety and security. Right now, the townships definitely take care of their responsibilities as outlined in the ORC, and we recognize that. We recognize budget constraints. We certainly don't want to be confusing the general public here, though, with detailed accounts. And the next thing you know, we listen to a ten-minute dissertation, and we're all confused. As Commissioner Kallo pointed out, when he became commissioner, there was a learning experience in going from the private business to the public sector and what these different accounts were. As you know, it's very, very confusing. So let's not try and confuse our residents. Let's keep this simple. Now, I'm going to use some numbers that were presented. I'm going to have to assume they are accurate. Commissioner Blair, you said sixty-six point six million dollars in general fund revenues. I assume that's still correct.
Not revenues.
General fund.
Not revenues.
General fund expenditures.
Okay, well, let's take expenditures. I appreciate the correction. I really like accuracy. As you're aware, I'm an engineer. I'm into numbers, and I'm into accuracy.
Could you be a little less into that microphone? It sounds like you're yelling out there.
Neil just likes to do that.
So maybe we can have a better, maybe we can have a better dialogue if we don't feel like we're being yelled at up here.
Perhaps, Jim. I don't intend to yell at you, but safety and security is emotional.
I understand that, but-
It's hard to control your emotions when you're talking about the basics.
It's hard to have a collaborative discussion when one person's yelling, though.
It depends on whether you're giving or receiving.
All right, Neil. You wanted to talk about sixty-six million dollars.
I've got broad shoulders. I'll carry that pack of rocks upside in any day, Jim.
I understand, Neil.
Sixty-six point six million. It was pointed out, the proportion given to the sheriff's department. And it was stated where they stood in the pecking order in terms of the proportion amount given out. And they're probably, I believe it's up there, and let's see, we had the sheriff's department. It's actually, seven point nine million is a good estimate that Commissioner Blair has put here. It was actually seven million, eight hundred fifty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. I believe this was the second highest you have here.
Domestic relations is first.
Okay, but realize, you've got to be careful with figures.
And that doesn't include the jail.
And that doesn't include the jail. But let's take your number, seven point nine million out of sixty-six point six. Second highest really sounds big. But safety, security is basic, and that amounts to, of that sixty-six point six million, eleven point eight six percent allocation. We don't have to worry about growth. The various Lorain County townships stand willing to cooperate with the commissioners in developing creative, innovative, and regional alternatives to ensure a stable funding source exists that will guarantee sustainable and improved, not just bare bones, improved safety, security services to all the residents of Lorain County. And there's many different ways to do that. And we will brainstorm and listen and work together cooperatively. Sometimes we might shout, "Jim." But we'll still work cooperatively in seeing that we can improve things for the citizens of Lorain County. And if we do this bickering, it's probably best we bicker among ourselves when we start talking about individual accounts and not confuse the matter. This is a matter of safety and security. When I asked for the commissioner's position, I'm still confused on some. I heard Commissioner Kokoski loud and clear, and she sounds strongly in support, and I appreciate that. Commissioner Kallo, I sense you're in support, but I realize all of you want to see your budget hearing on July 12th. And I realize that's important because all your other departments require the appropriate funding. Commissioner Blair, I'm not sure, perhaps you got emotional as the rest of us do since you heard a comment that you took strong offense to.
I sure did.
But keep in mind, that may be something that could be a personal thing between you and one of your trustees.
Oh, never. He's my bud.
But let's not have something like that that results in punishment to the citizens that not only we represent, but you represent. So I certainly hope if you can do it now, you at least restore this small amount to the sheriff's department. Have to find that number again.
One hundred forty-six thousand dollars.
Point two-two-five percent. One hundred forty-six, which will be even less than point two-two-five percent. That really sounds like a small number. In addition to carrying rocks up a hill, that sounds like spitting into the hurricane, Jim.
You know, the one hundred sixty-six million that you ref, excuse me, the sixty-six million that you referenced, I probably need to point out that that's the tax budget that was requested. Normally, our appropriation process that we go to in December is significantly different than the tax budget that's passed. The tax budget's by law, it's more a wish list by the departments of what they believe their needs are going to be, and they normally are more significant than what's allocated in December. Our budget going into this year was a little bit over fifty-eight million dollars for operations. We treat the budget two different ways. We have operating budgets, and then we have overall budgets that include the carryover. I know you don't like complications, but unfortunately, the devil sometimes is in the details. So if you're looking at the overall operation numbers of Lorain County, we anticipate that number being somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty-seven million dollars that Commissioner Kallo talked about as an operating budget. So the, you can't, and you can, but maybe we shouldn't, look at the tax budget because it's something that's, it's an archaic system that's required by the Ohio Vice Co., but it really has no bearing on the overall funding of these departments.
Neil, as a business guy, it makes no sense whatsoever. Okay? Ignore those numbers, they mean nothing.
We pay little attention to the tax budget, and I see our budget director sitting back there. And we go through that process because we're required to by code. The most significant thing we do is the annual appropriation, which comes in December, and that is when the actual dollars are put to the departments. And as Commissioner Kallo rightfully said, we upped our revenue projection by over three million dollars, and it was difficult because people read in the paper that we got one point three million dollars of additional money. First thing everybody says, "Wow, that's great, hurrah, we can get some of these cuts restored." We already took into consideration that one point three million dollars. You know, we shook the little crystal ball and looked into it, and we said, "Well, this is the revenue we think we're going to have." Even though our certificate is at forty-nine, I think it was forty-eight-nine when it started, somewhere in that neighborhood, we actually allocated and appropriated money for the operations that was significantly above that, knowing that we were going to have increased revenue. We anticipate having increased revenue. And by the way, if we didn't have carryover, we couldn't do that. If we didn't have carryover, we would have had to pass a forty-eight million, eight hundred thousand dollar budget, and right now, it's requiring fifty-seven million dollars to run this county. So we would have had to pass these budgets with ten million dollars less in their budgets than we did. And imagine how unnerved people would be at that point. I know these sound like complications, but we cannot make a complicated issue too simple and water it down so much that people get the wrong perception of what we're dealing with here. An engineer once said, "Is the cup half-full or is it half-empty?" And the engineer, and the engineer said to me, "The cup is too big." Okay? Redesign it. All right? So I'm not being contrary to you, and you and I have multiple discussions over the years, and I'm not trying to make it distorted till it's too difficult. But please, it's just not as simple as black and white. There's a lot of complexity to it. That's all I'm suggesting.
Jim, I appreciate that, and I appreciate that you're attending to the details there and helping guide the commissioners here. And I understand that you now will have an assistant that may help you with that. But I also recognize it is the commissioner's decision. And in this particular case, you may have to go through and punch more keys on your calculator and start scratching on pencils. But I'm going back to the three bullet points, item six, seven, and eight, that we came up with first. Item six, I think we've addressed, which is open the dialogue here and hopefully not confuse the many people that have shown up here for this important issue. I hope your questions are answered. But the real key items are items seven and eight, where we encourage the Board of Commissioners to reaffirm Resolution Number 92-741, which pledged to maintain the staffing level of twenty-eight line personnel, patrol officers, and deputy sheriffs within the sheriff's law enforcement division. And the third item is to support immediate funding restoration of sheriff's department[1662.26] to ensure adequate officers are available to deter crime and minimize fear. I would hope you could do that today, but if you can't, I hope it will happen soon. I would like to see more support from the commissioners on this. This is a very basic need. As I heard one of our constituents say, this isn't the dessert, this is the meat and potatoes. We need to take care of this. So I'd hope that your commissioners could make that decision today, that's up to you. I do want to thank you for hearing us. There may be other people coming up, I'm not aware of that. We also want to make sure that we thank our citizens that have shown up here today. You can see this is a real concern, and they've taken an active interest in this. Some of them taking time off work, and many of them that have already experienced some of the services that the Sheriff's Department provides them. We stand willing to work together, but everything's on the table, not just one. Thank you.
Neil, our plan was to have these fiscal hearings and then make some type of decision by the end of July. So you will have a decision by the end of July.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Kokoski.
Mr. Innes.
Mr. Innes from Prosecutor's Office would like to speak.
I guess I wanted to throw my two cents in here, understanding that the township trustees are my clients, the Board of Commissioners are my clients, the sheriff is my client, and all the rest of the elected officials in the county are my clients.
I think you should just be quiet then, you're giving me big trouble.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, I would like my client, sheriff, to get his money. I would like the trustees to get more money. I would like the prosecutor's office to get more money, and I would like all the other elected officials to get their money and their budgets restored as attorney for all those people. But as attorney for the commissioners, I understand their problem. We mentioned that 72 percent of this cost goes to the Justice Center. The principal players in the Justice Center are the sheriff, the prosecuting attorney, the clerk of courts, and the judges. So if we give more money to the sheriffs, do we take it away from the prosecutor's office? I mean, if we have a ten-- I gave this scenario to the Farm Grill the other day. If we lose 10 percent of our budgets and we can't man every 10th court, do we have a jar with the names in there, and every 10th murderer, rapist, drug dealer, child molester goes free because we can't man that person, that court? You say, okay, give the sheriff and the prosecutors the money, we'll take it from the clerk of courts. They don't seem to do much. I don't think people understand how important the clerk of courts are. If they're not there, sheriff can't get his warrants, he can't get the paperwork to put people in jail, prosecutor can't do anything we do, the court's orders can't get out there. The clerk of courts is vital to the system, and I think they're talking about shutting down in September or something. So we gotta have the clerk of courts. And then we go to the courts themselves. Judges can't try the cases, it doesn't happen there. And if we can't get the sentencing paper, we don't get them to jail. So it's, where do you take the money from people? You need the whole, the whole system there. And all of our people need more money. You know, we can play around with these numbers, and do we go to the engineer and take the money away from him so that you don't have roads, so our patrolman can't ride on the roads? Do we take it from 911? I suppose if we take it from the auditor and the treasurer, that none of us will get tax bills that will make us happy.
Let's do that.
I'll second that.
None of our communities, our libraries, our schools, and our cities will then get any money. So they're kind of big players in the game. Where do you go to take the money from when you're talking about these big dollars? You know, we can fool around with these numbers and these percentages, but the fact is that, and like I said, I'm hoping we get our budgets restored, but I know that whether it's January of next year, or a year from now, or a year and a half from now, we will be out of money, and you will be coming here asking for it, and there will be nowhere to go. So I hope, and we've got to get the message to the cities. They seem to think the counties don't do anything for them. Well, we talked about that 90 percent plus of those criminals that would go out, they're going to go back to the cities. So if we can work together, I hate to see us fighting each other. We need to work together and get the message to your friends, your neighbors, the people you know in the cities, and let them know that this is an issue for them too. It will affect them, and we've got about a year, year and a half, two years at best to come up with a solution. The commissioners did something that I know is probably unpopular, the prosecuting office, prosecuting attorney's office, the trustees, and the sheriffs all supported the sales tax levy. We don't think it's a fake issue, and we don't think the right thing to do is to wait until everything collapses before we start getting that money. We want to, we want to see the sheriff's office maintained now. Like you said, not wait till some sheriff's deputy gets injured and then say, now we'll get the money. So, you know, let's work together. We need to get some source of revenue in here if we're going to make it happen. So I would hope you would go out and contact your people in the municipalities and get that message to them.
Very well said, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry.
Yep.
My name is Barbara Harper. I'm a township trustee in La Grange Township. And Jerry, thank you, you couldn't have made a better lead-in for the comment I have. Of the local government fund that has been reapportioned and the county has lost, a small portion of that went to the townships, and you're asking us to kick back so we can have patrols. Are you going to ask the city of Lorraine and the other cities that got the bulk of that money to kick back in some of the money they got to fund the Sheriff's Department too?
Good question.
I mean, this isn't just the township that gets the service from the Sheriff's Department.
I think, Barbara, and I've spoke to-- not to interrupt, I was going to answer your question, but go ahead.
Well, I, that was my only question, but I do have a comment. I really don't think you want me carrying a gun.
Can I answer a question first, Dick? Barb, to answer your question, you ran away. I have actually spoke to the mayors of the two largest cities and council members, and we were talking about transit and such, because they told me when it comes to sheriffs and road patrols, the sheriff has to provide the mandated services municipalities that the revised code tells him to. Other than that, that's their only concern. So I mean, that has been the response I've had from elected officials in the large municipalities.
The commissioners, Mr. Cordez, just a quick summary. We appear here today because we request that we get the Sheriff's Department to reinstate the road patrols to the level we've had in previous years. And the other thing I'd just like to remind you, reemphasize the fact that we in the townships are residents and we pay taxes. And all the money, that $66 billion that you receive, some of it's contributed to the fact, the taxes that are collected from township residents. I think the study that we've looked at, about 25 percent of the revenue that you receive can be attributed towards township residents. And we think that we're entitled to a return for those taxes that we pay. If you look at the services that we receive, among the main services we give are from the engineer's office, we're very well served, county prosecutor's office, we're very well served, and it's been the sheriff's department, and we've been very well served. But now, in this last month, we've cut those road patrols, which is very significant to the townships. It's one of the major services we receive for all the taxes and the money that's collected in behalf of our townships. If you look back to the last few years, we're limited on our sources of revenue. We can only rely on property taxes. We can't enact this income tax or a sales tax. We had a deregulation three years ago, we took a significant cut in our utility taxes that we got. We're presently in the process of phasing out the estate tax. The local government funds that we received just partially was recovered from those monies that we've lost in the last couple of years. So we don't have those funds that we can go out and fund a sheriff department without going to a property tax. Most of our property tax goes towards schools. The other major portion is county functions, taxes that you have come in from the county. Then to increase that tax base, it puts a real burden upon our residents, because we have no other sources in order to pay for the services we're paying.
Can I add you one?
So the major services that we receive is from the sheriff's department, and we're only asking that small amount of money that we get in return, it's not too much to ask. You look at a local government fund, even though you took a cut, you've still got $5 million. And the $5 million that you receive was directly related to the population of the townships. So some of this money that you get from that $5 million ought to be contributed back to those residents who helped you get that $5 million. And $150,000, that's not too much to ask for that $5 million. Thank you.
You stopped it, just so we can go over. When you said the property taxes go towards county functions, let's make this clear. I don't know who all reads your tax bill, because I had this with one of my installers the other day. He never bothered reading his tax bill. Commissioner Blair has hers, but mine are public record, doesn't matter. I pay a half between my commercial business, my personal business, somewhere around $5,400 a half. Out of that total, when we totaled all up, I think about, yeah, $214 of that $5,000 and change went to county government. The rest went to mandated levies that you voted on. If you read your tax bill, can I borrow yours, Commissioner?
Please, please.
Just, I didn't bring mine. I don't have my glasses.
You don't have my glasses, too?
Hang on a second. Not in my pocket. I didn't think I had to read anymore. But when you go through your percentages, and this is, and this is township, this is perfect, on Commissioner Blair's tax bill, and I don't know what the numbers are here, but a large portion of hers went, the township received it. Then you had the JVS School District, which is a voted-on levy. Then you had the School District, which is just a very large portion of this. I don't know your totals, and I don't want to talk.
Yeah, I highlighted it with the county general fund.
Okay. Out of all the taxes Commissioner Blair pays--
And I don't care, it's public record.
Okay, that's four. She pays about $1,200 a half. It's $44.82 to the county general fund. Metro Parks receives $28, Children's Services 32, Community College 60, 911 $7, MRDD $62, TB Clinic $1, Mental Health $37, Anti-Drug $1.50. Those are all services that were voted on and put into place based on our county population. These are not for county governments' operations. These dollars do not fund, other than that small portion, any of the Sheriff's Department or the prosecutors or the clerk of courts or the judges or domestic relations or any-- just so when you say county dollars, these are all voted on. These are not, said you have to pay, and the county says you have to support MRDD. We voted on those things, so I was trying to make that clear, that we aren't taking all your-- there's a confusion with property taxes, and most people pay it with their house payment. They don't read the breakdowns of where it goes to county government. Even though we handle the money, it comes through here, it goes out. And it has to go where it's restricted to. So when Jerry said we can't take, we can take 911 money to help with the funding, I don't think we can, Jerry. I think we might go to jail. I don't think Amber Fisher would be happy if we took MRDD money, so. I just want to make it clear, when you said county dollars, they don't go to county government. They go to past levies that we have requested and put on the ballot, so.
I understand your point, but the bottom line is that all of those levies and so on that you talked that are passed, we can go back to the park levy. We passed the park levy, most certainly we supported it. But parks mostly are benefited from residents in the cities. Who want to get away from their, like, the mountain parks and say, I want to be out here, I just feel free getting out and enjoying this atmosphere that township people normally get from daily to day. But yet, we pass these levies, and they buy this park land that comes off the tax duplicate, which reduces the taxes, go to the townships, and we pay into that tax, but then the number of residents in the townships actually benefit from those going in and using those, utilizing this park, probably 1% or 2% of the people that do it. And that's right across the board. If you look at children's services, most certainly you support children's services. 5% or 6% of the total cases of children's services come from township residents, from townships.
I agree, I'm not arguing with what you're saying. You're clearing the amount of revenue we get in, Dick. That's not our revenue to provide services.
But nevertheless, all the money you collect, the townships is paying more than their fair share, and a small return for what we get would be police protection and road patrols, and we expect that we can get that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
My name is Marlene Thompson. I live at 170 Brentview in Carlisle Township. Hi, neighbor. Hi. I'm not being presumptuous, I hope to just step up to the podium, and I want to thank you for allowing me to address you about the issues of township security and road patrols. On Saturday, June 23rd, 2007, The Chronicle Telegram printed an article from the Chicago Tribune titled "Hometown vs. Homeland Security." The main thrust of the article wasn't just, quote, "that the nation's sheriffs have been overstretched since 9/11," although substantial federal funds have been directed to homeland security rather than hometown security. Rather, it dealt with the flood of challenges and demands on sheriff departments around the country stemming from 21st century crimes. Already strained sheriffs are forced to do more with less as costs mount and overall support declines. Rural America and Lorraine County today face issues unlike those of previous generations: meth labs in neighborhoods, bolder and more brutal crimes by drug users, dwindling generational trust and customs, convicted sexual offenders living near schools or daycare centers, skyrocketing home foreclosures that leave unoccupied homes targets for thieves and vandals. A generation ago, who would have heard of stripping aluminum siding, of ripping copper plumbing from a vacant or even an occupied dwelling? I'm a longtime public employee, and I recognize the budget constraints of the public sector. But I also recognize that taxpayers are already overburdened. In Lorraine County, we're no exception. And for you and county government, I know your expenditures cannot exceed your revenue, that you have a fiduciary responsibility to balance the budget. However, I see commissioners' responsibilities that go beyond the budget, those of protecting the public and preserving the peace. Residents cannot usurp your decision-making powers in budgetary matters. However, residents can exercise their powers, the power of persuasion like today, and decision-making powers at the polls. My words are not a threat, rather a promise, that township residents can mobilize forces to stand for what is right, protecting the welfare of township residents, to stand for what is fair, a fair and equitable return for tax dollars, and to stand for what is safe, warding off 21st century threats to property and life, including those deputies on understaffed patrols. I'd like to close with a biblical quote, "Love your neighbor as yourself." These people behind me are my neighbors, as are all township residents. I love them and want to do what I can to protect them. That's why I'm here, appealing to you. But the persons in this room, along with other township residents, are your neighbors also. Can you, in good conscience, do any less than love and protect them? Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Very open.
Thank you, Marlene.
Hi, I'm Linda Morrison. I'm an Eaton Township resident, but I'm also a very concerned resident. While our Township Association has done a wonderful job in presenting their case to you today, sitting back listening, I identified some things that I don't think were taken into consideration. What we've heard today is the reduction in community policing services for our residents in the townships. Well, what wasn't mentioned is the reduction in Safety Town and the DARE programs for our kids. You don't man the DARE programs, guess what's going to happen with the drug rates? They're going to continue to climb. Rita pointed out that we've had a 20 percent increase in line-one crime rates. A lot of those crime rates are shifting out to the townships. Where do you think they're finding the meth labs? It's not in the cities. Where do you think they're taking the aluminum siding? It's to the salvage yards in the townships, it's not in the cities. If we don't have adequate patrol, we can't curb that within our townships, and the township rates of crime are going to continue to climb. In Eaton Township, we're already seeing that. We've got a salvage yard, we've got the meth labs. The other thing that I think was missing was we talked about protecting the sheriffs. We have volunteer EMS and firefighters in our townships. What about their protection? When you've got 350 miles of roadway to cover, 28 sheriffs, no community policing officer, their lives are at risk when they come up on a violent situation. And they're going to stand back and wait for a sheriff to show up? You're not putting just our residents at risk, you're putting those volunteers at risk too. I think there's a fallacy that exists. What I heard today was that the townships have more money. I don't agree. We've got the same cost increases you do. We have increased insurance costs, we have increased gasoline costs. We have to be more creative in finding solutions to provide additional services to our residents with the same dollars that we had yesterday, and we're expecting you to do the same thing. In Eaton Township in particular, we did provide a substation, we did support the county. We have a substation for those sheriffs. That saves the county on gasoline dollars, which we knows are all rising. Residents are now meeting the sheriffs at the substation, the sheriffs aren't driving all over. Help us, we need help in the townships. Those community policing officers taking them out is exactly the wrong thing to do. There are other sources. You talked about increased insurance cost, $350 to $1,100 per employee. How much is the employee contributing? Can you share that with me?
$110 at the top end of the plan.
It was 35. Okay, so that's 10 percent. Not all of them, not all of them, just non-bargaining, non-bargaining. Right. Right now.
Non-bargaining units were like $35 a month.
Okay, 10 percent. In the real world, what are they contributing? In the real world, what are they contributing?
My company, fifty percent.
Right. Have you thought about doing that so we can put some money back into the Sheriff's Department? We're trying. How many dollars would you save? You have to go through bargaining to do that. Would it be the seventy-five thousand, seventy thousand that it would take to reinstate his overtime?
More than enough.
Put the DARE program back in our community?
More than enough.
Safety Town?
More than enough.
You're asking the township to come up with money to support your efforts. Somebody else said, "Where's the money from the cities?" They're occupying your jails. Have you asked them to contribute more?
Road patrol and the jails are two different things.
No, but it's still the sheriff's budget.
No, they're separate.
Different budget?
Separate budgets.
There's a quarter percent income tax.
Sales tax.
Quarter percent sales tax towards the jail, and then we add another three or three-and-a-half million dollars to it because the cost exceeds the sales tax. And sure, the sheriff would know the exact dollars of what it generates.
About ten million, ten to eleven million.
Almost eleven million dollars.
And don't forget, while you're putting our EMS and firefighters at risk while they're waiting on the sheriff to show up, seconds are valuable in an individual's life waiting on care. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Gordon Dupree, representing the Alaria City Schools. And we are requesting that the level of sheriff service is not diminished, and I'll tell you why. As you know, we have three schools in the township: Westwood Junior High School, Crestwood Elementary School, and there's a kindergarten village. The kindergarten village has three-hundred-and-thirty-six six-year-olds. Westwood has three-hundred-and-seventy-seven students, and Crestwood has three-hundred-and-sixty-two students. Now, the staff in those buildings, it's about a hundred-and-seventy-five adults. So that's about twelve-hundred-and-fifty people in the township. And as you know, in the township schools, you can stand at one school and see them all. The concerns that we have had in the past, that we have had to address with Sheriff's Deputy Stomitti and Sheriff's Deputy Stomitti and Deputy Resendez have been about, for example, on occasion, you'll have a father who has gone through a divorce and his wife will not let him see his kids. So he wants to go to a school and demand that the school let him see his children, and that causes many problems for the kids involved, parents, staff, so those kinds of things. So we are asking, if anything, that the level of service that is offered now by the Sheriff's Department not be diminished. In fact, over the years, we have asked Sheriff's Deputy and Officer Resendez if we could increase the amount of service that exists now, and their response has been understandably that the funding source for that type of increase would have to be from yourselves. So we are pleading with you, just for the young people even, for the safety and security of these young people. We are asking that these services not be diminished. One more thing. Just before I came here this morning, I saw on the front page of The Chronicle two articles that took up most of the front page about criminals in and around Ohio or thereabouts. And that's very scary when you look at the fact that someone mentioned earlier today, some gentleman who spoke here said he's going to begin to pack his gun again.
He's in the third row.
When we think about packing, we think about kids. They just pack lunches. And they are so vulnerable, and I think probably everyone in this room either knows a child in school or has a child in school. So we are simply asking on behalf of the school system if you would consider not lowering the funding levels of the Sheriff's Department. Thank you.
Excuse me, sir, before you run off. And I'm going to assume this is true. I'm going to make a statement. I'm going to assume it. But in case of emergency, nine-one-one call, I'm assuming there's mutual aid, that if it's the Alaria City Schools, the Alaria City Police Department would show up if a sheriff didn't? I mean, when I got broke into at my house a couple of years ago, Amherst was closer.
Yes.
They actually showed up. So I'm assuming there's some type of agreement if there's an emergency going on.
Yes, we have. Mr. Calo, in fact, what we've done sometimes is when we've called the Sheriff's Department, there may be a cruiser at the mall from the EPD that's closer, and that vehicle would respond. Yes, you're correct.
Okay, so it's not like it's unprotected, so it has to come from Columbia Township to cover the school.
Yes.
Okay, all right, I didn't want... SCAR Tech has swerved to agree, but let's at least make them somewhat reasonable, so... okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dupree.
Well, thank you. There's a couple of firsts here today. One is I've never had to wait in line to come up here, which is... that's a refreshing feeling, actually. And the other is I've never had to say good afternoon, because I guess I can say that now. It's always been good morning. But on a more serious note, last week, when I didn't have to wait in line, I discussed with you the issues of June twelfth. The sheriff touched on them today with the deputy that was almost injured. Well, he did sustain injuries. He was treated at the emergency room. And I told you, and I kind of walked you through that morning with you about what happened. And I don't know if the people are aware of it, because I don't know how much was in the paper, but that deputy at one point was told he was going to meet God. And that's not a very comforting feeling. And you talked before about the Vietnam Memorial that you went to. I don't know if any of you had a chance to attend the funeral in Avon, when all the officers were wearing their mourning bands, because an officer was killed in Cleveland Heights. I don't want to wear a mourning band. I don't want to attend a deputy's funeral so that we can take this as a serious matter. But I think that's what it's coming to. Somebody's going to have to get hurt drastically or killed before this is taken serious. This is absurd. We're talking about these twenty-eight deputies. Let's renew this resolution. First of all, those twenty-eight deputies, they look at it as shifts. It doesn't work that way. There aren't six people here, six people here, and six people here. Day shift requires much more people, because they have the duties of hospitals. They have to escort prisoners to and from court. There's all additional duties. There's sexual predator notifications. So in fact, last week, on several occasions, there were three deputies patrolling the entire county on midnight shift. Three cars, patrolling your three-hundred-and-sixty square miles. Those deputies rely on each other for assistance. If they get two calls, that leaves one deputy on his own to patrol his own. If he stops a traffic car, or he makes a traffic stop and runs into problems like Deputy Damiano did on June twelfth and needs help, what if the other cars are tied up? His closest response may be ten to fifteen minutes away. Fortunately, we have some cities that will jump in, but they're not always available because we don't control what happens there. And there was some confusion that night. The other cars on the road that night, which on that particular evening, there were five cars on the road, which was an optimal thing for midnight shift, that they were tied up. There were three calls that had come in basically at the same time. So all emergency situations, all the cars were tied up. One was broken free from the call, Deputy Damiano, who ended up getting in this situation. The other thing I wanted to kind of... because Commissioner Blair had talked about the Lorraine County Deputies Association. I'm one of the founders of the association. It started in nineteen-eighty-one, and this was long before the collective bargaining agreement in Ohio existed. It was long before SERV. And the reason we formed that, and I think Captain Zrostowski was involved, he may have been working with the... I know he was working with the county. I don't know if he was in the Sheriff's Department at the time, but I'm sure he's aware of this issue. The primary issue at that time, the sheriff, was Jim Mertz, that we had, and the reason we formed the union is because we wanted cages, cages in the cars to protect the driver from the prisoner. And the sheriff at that time did not want us to have cages because he did not want the people to feel like they were being imprisoned.
They're arrested, right?
Yeah, because that way, when we were... because at that time, we were handling accidents. The state patrol didn't handle the accidents, we did. And he thought that would make somebody feel off if they had to sit in the back of the car. That was why the union was formed. That was one of the primary purposes. Our association has gone through several changes. Several different officers have taken control of it. I now have been asked to come back and help them out, which I'm doing. And I'm proud of that fact, that they asked me to come back. But I think this resolution, where we're saying, "Let's keep it at twenty-eight," no. Let's raise it, because times, they are a changer. We're talking about a nineteen-ninety-two resolution. That's fifteen years ago. You don't... we didn't have sexual predator notifications. We didn't have all these other job tasks that are there consuming up these twenty-eight people. Let's think about the safety. Now, what bothers me is everything I've heard today has been emergency, emergency, emergency. We're in a state of emergency. If we were in a state of emergency, why didn't the commissioners pass the tax unanimously to avoid a petition?
We did.
State law gives them the right thirty days to get a referendum. If we'd have passed it under emergency, they had to August thirty-first to get a referendum.
Why wasn't it done under emergency?
It didn't matter.
We could have had this tax in effect.
It wasn't done under emergency because it would have left a longer period for the referendum, so shortened the window by not doing it by emergency. Strategically, it was thought about, all right, and...
Well, I think we're at the say of emergency.
Well, you know, it's easy to throw the football from the armchair, okay? It was thought about, and strategically, the board dialogued a lot on that and thought hard about how they wanted to do that. So you asked the question. That's the answer.
Okay. Well, I wanted the answer.
I'd like to pick the lottery number after it's called, too.
And I invite any of the county commissioners to do a ride-along with some of these deputies, because I think it would be a good idea, so that you see what we go through out there. It's not a fun picture. If we can have you sign a waiver, so in case you're killed, we don't get sued. But ride along with them and see what it's like out there on a midnight shift with three people and a sergeant. We got to do something before it's... I don't want to attend another funeral. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Harold Wilson.
Give me one second, mister. I think, unless there's anybody else, I think we'll let Mr. Wilson finish up, and then we'll go to board correspondence and then public comment if there's other issues to speak on. Is that pretty much agreed, because the crowd's starting to empty out? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
I'm here today in support of the townships, asking the commissioners to restore the sheriff's budget as soon as possible. And about that point-two-five percent tax, Mrs. Blair, you were asked at one of the public hearings, would any of this money go to the Sheriff's Department? The comment from all of you was no. None of that would restore their budget.
I don't believe that's true. I don't believe that's true at all, Harold.
I do believe that's true. If you look back through your minutes or look in some of the news articles...
I believe we said that if it's passed, it would restore the budgets.
I believe...
If in fact, it's restoring the budgets, then that's taking care of the shortfall right here. I think you're uninformed. I'm sorry.
I think what was mentioned, just to be clear, was if there were any additional dollars generated by the tax, are we going to put that to the Sheriff's Department? And we said we could do that as a board, but the next board that comes along after us, we're not by law required to do the same as we did.
I remember hearing that none of that money was going to be sent toward the Sheriff's Department. Anyhow, you've been throwing up some smoke screens about it, but...
Matter of opinion.
You know, these deputies are in danger out there, and this is something that needs to be acted on as soon as possible. I don't think this can wait much longer, you know? my thoughts get mixed up here. Okay, well, that would be it for now.
Well, Mr. Wilson, I have your letter to the editor here, and we talked about, you know, becoming a commissioner is confusing, and there's a lot of different areas where money can and cannot be spent. And one of the things in your letter was the train station. The train station doesn't have general fund monies going to repair that. That's money coming from the federal government. You know, and somebody else had written one about the baseball bleachers, you know, like, "We're making bad decisions. We should be taking that money and putting it to the sheriffs." This money from the baseball bleachers was from solid waste, which we can't put in the general fund. The train station money was a grant from the federal government. We can't give that to the Sheriff's Department. So there's a lot of issues that you... some people are not aware of and get confused about, which if I wasn't a commissioner, I would think the same thing.
There's always a way to move things around.
Not this money.
If you free up money here, you can use other monies in other places, normally on budgets. Some of the remodeling has been done. If some of that money could have been used from solid waste, which I'm sure some of it was on the fifth floor.
It was.
And... but I mean, you know, there's always ways of... for going... is the fifth floor occupied yet at the Justice Center?
The fifth floor of the Justice Center was...
Or I mean, the top floor?
Were you talking about the build-out floor? I give the board tremendous amount of credit that we shelled out a whole floor of that Justice Center so that it had enough space to carry the county for the next twenty-five years. So as the county grows, we will not have to do major construction over there. It'll have to build out. It's shelled, but that was part of the long-term strategic thinking on what the needs for the county were going to be. I got to tell you, I got to amplify what Commissioner Kokoski said. It's very easy to write these letters and mislead the public into believing that money that could be paid for road patrols is being paid to renovate a train station or do something else. The commissioners are very, very good about finding dollars that are specific dollars that do not have the flexibility that you are indicating to people and applying it for a resource for this county. It makes it even harder when letters like the one you wrote appear, and eighty-three percent of the people live in the urbanized areas, and seventeen percent of the people live in the unincorporated areas, and we start talking about that. I mean, the commissioners are supporting road patrols in the unincorporated area. It's right. It's necessary. Safety is a concern. But when you talk about, should we go to the cities, or should we do this, or the funding pools, eighty-three percent of the voters, eighty-three percent of the people have a different opinion up in the urbanized area. And sometimes we lose the perspective that the board actually makes courageous decisions because they are providing those services. But if you ask people that live in the urbanized areas about this issue, they're not as supportive as you might think. So it's a real balancing act. And as far as you can always make dollars work in different ways, that's not accurate. Some of these dollars are very, very specifically allocated with very well-defined purposes, and you can't stray too far from those purposes. And when a taxpayer picks up the paper and it reads that we spent two million dollars on a train station that should have went to the Sheriff's Department, that's all they read. They don't understand the rest.
I don't believe there was a figure amount.
Well, there wasn't, sir. There wasn't. That's correct. But as a generalization, what we do is we don't aid our cause. We confuse our cause with those type of statements, especially with people that are not directly affected by this issue, recognizing that the bulk of the residents in Lorraine County are not affected by this issue. That doesn't say that it shouldn't be addressed and it's not important. We have to be careful, because they read that in the paper and they think it's gospel.
Well, there's no matching monies whatsoever for the train station?
The money that's being used as a match was from the property that was purchased about, I want to say, eight or nine years ago. So it's an indirect match.
So that was money that came out of the general fund, then?
About nine years ago, yes, for a property purchase.
So it is money... I mean, it was a correct statement then, saying that there is money that could have been spent for the sheriff's office.
Nine years ago.
Being used.
Well, nine years ago.
Nine years ago, when we didn't have the trouble that we're having now.
Can't go back and rethink every decision. Go back... we can go back...
We weren't on the board at that time anyways.
Betty was.
It's all Betty's fault.
But everything's done by a resolution, and the commissioners make resolutions.
I did it.
Without a doubt, we make the resolution, Mr. Wilson, but we can't retract what was spent nine years ago. Can you go back and get the money returned, because you don't want the car you bought nine years ago? I don't think anybody's going to return you your money.
Or an investment of two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars to purchase the train station, because that's about what it cost to purchase it, has allowed us to amplify that to five million dollars worth of federal funds being spent here locally.
Including almost four-hundred thousand dollars from Senator Voinovich.
That we just got. And the unfortunate consequence of being able to access resources and bring them back to Lorraine County, and it was the same for the wire grant and all the grants that we're trying to get from the federal government. The federal government demands that you put local monies into it. Most of the time, it's only five percent or ten percent money. So for every five dollars you spend on a project, you're getting ninety-five percent of that money from outside the county back into the county, and churning and multiplying within... And churning and multiplying within Lorraine County and creating opportunities within Lorraine County. We cannot put a wall up around Lorraine County and not participate in those things, because that money will go to other communities and have the multiplying effect in other communities. So we need to be doing these things. And in fact, we need to be doing more of these things because not only is safety a concern, but you have a lot more crime when people don't have jobs, okay? Or they don't have employment opportunities, or they don't have other services. Okay, so, so
Actually, our population has grown, Mr. Wilson. I hate to disagree with you, we're at 297,000 people.
Population has grown, but jobs have declined.
Jobs have declined, correct. Population's grown.
Some of the jobs have declined, but we just read a report from the Plain Dealer that was done by the urban studies schools and companies grew by 5% in Lorraine County. The companies are growing. They're smaller. Companies are growing and, and job loss is more due to technology increases. Productivity's up, technology's up, growth in companies are up, but some of the hardline smokestack industries that are still on the decline have resulted in an overall net loss of a certain amount of jobs. But we are making progress. And if you want the crime rate to go even higher, let's not put any money in economic development, let's not pursue those issues, let's have more people unemployed, let's not provide a social service safety net for them, which we pay $1.5 million for, and see how bad crime really does get, all right? It's a balancing act and not one piece can be taken and prioritized over the other pieces because there's a synergy between all of these things. And in the mosaic of what we're trying to figure out, we got to, we got to bring good balance to those things and not just one thing. And I just get very disturbed when, when, when letters are written to the editor and there's a lot of pontification going on out there about, about what we should be doing when there's not a lot of research to find out why we did it.
Okay, well, last thing I got is, I hope you take a look at the transit. These buses are way oversized for the amount of people at any given time you see on them.
Yeah, you know what, that was a good point. I want to address that point, too, because we have thought about that. I'm not sure why people think we're mindless people that don't think about anything up here, but we do. All right? The bus, it costs almost exactly the same amount of money to run a bus that carries 32 people as it does a bus for 17 people. The gas mileage is pretty, pretty much the same. You're talking fractions of a mile on those buses. Plus, we're able to get additional dollars for the larger buses from the federal government. So it's all part of our FTA grant money. 95% of the cost of those buses come from FTA dollars. But they do mandate a certain bus that we may have to use or put on the road. The 32-passenger bus actually is the smallest bus that we could get under the last grant and still be able to get cost-effective gas mileage. So we're not, we got a call from the soccer academy that they wanted to rent buses from us to run the students. The unfortunate consequence, the biggest bus I could run out there, and they wanted, they had 200 students, was a bus for 32 people, because that is the very largest bus we have. Most of our other buses run from 18 to 32. The last set of buses we bought were for 32 because the grant allowed us to do that and the gas mileage was almost exactly the same on that bus from the 17 or 18-passenger one, so we bought the greater resource. I mean, there was an explanation for that. Sometimes the people would just sit and ask a question, they may get an answer before they decide what the answer is without knowing.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Teresa, first report.
You can still comment after we
Yeah, you can go back to public comment. Let's get through the meeting and we'll go back to whatever comments were left.
Just to remind everybody, Tuesday, July 3rd, we're going to meet at 9:30 a.m. rather than Thursday. And board correspondence.
Move the reading be waived.
Second discussion. Mr. Kallo.
Hi.
Ms. Blair.
Hi.
Ms. Kowski.
Hi.
Public comment? Anyone else?
Come on up here.
Commissioner Kallo, you asked me a question a little earlier, and the question was, what's more important to the township, roads or safety or security? Speaking as a township trustee, our moral is roads, maintenance, and ditch maintenance. I believe you didn't quite catch the point where I think it's your moral responsibility to supply the funds to the sheriff's department for our safety. So I just wanted to answer that question personally. You addressed it to me.
Right, I did.
And I didn't get a chance to address that question, so thank you again.
Well, what happened with then, and your township wasn't part of, what do we do in the issue where we've had to cut the ditch funding then, and the townships haven't been able to pick that up?
It was New Russia and Carlisle.
I'm asking responsibilities. That's what we're asking for help to provide the services to the residents. I'm just asking for help.
Very familiar with that ditch program, because I got a lot of ditches done in our township. And I was sad to say that thing went down the tubes. We had another ditch that's in limbo right now because of no funding. All right, we have about seven ditches that got done on that program. That was a great program.
Great.
It is a great program.
I'd like to see that program re-initiated again, too.
Well, they've been here to ask for money also, and now we're here for, there's only so much dollars to go around, so I ask if you could prioritize.
You get. Thank you again.
Thanks, Rob.
Any more public comment? David, Shirley, Elizabeth, through all this, you have nothing to say? Motion to move an executive, motion to move an executive session is outlined by the administrator and prosecutor.